I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order, the Monroe County Council, for our meeting of Tuesday, February 13, 2024. I want to welcome all, both online and to the Nat U Hill room. Hold on one second, I'm activating my teams, I'm going to make sure I'm quiet here. Awesome. Okay, we're going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance as we normally do. Ask councilors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We've got just a note here on Item Three, Adoption of Agenda. Tom McGlass and our Waste Reduction District Director has requested to be moved closer to the beginning of the agenda due to a prior commitment that we want to make sure that he can honor. So I'm going to offer a motion to council to amend the agenda to move Item Ten to follow Item Seven.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same side. All right, thank you. The ayes have it. I do want to note that we have here present in the room, Counselor Iverson, Counselor Wills, Counselor Crossley, Counselor McKim, Counselor Munson. Counselor Hawke is here and will be back in here momentarily. Okay? Well, next on our agenda is public comment for items not on the agenda. There will be a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and if we have anyone wishing to make a public comment on items not on the agenda tonight here in Nat U Hill, they can come forward to our podium, no, actually come right here to our table and sign in. Anyone via teams, you can raise your hand and do so there. All right, come forward here to the table. And be sure to state your name as you get started.
All right, my name is Perry Robinson.
No. I think it's the button to the right. For me, it is.
I think.
Want to double check.
We don't know how to work our stuff.
It's new. I'm not. I want to make sure folks at home hear you.
Right.
Yeah, mine's not working.
Yours is not working?
No.
Try it again.
Are they supposed to be green when you push them?
Yeah, I think so. On your.
Mine is blue.
Mine's green all the time.
Mine's red all the time.
Now it is.
That's the other one.
You know?
Hello.
Oh, and green.
Hello.
We're in business. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Perry Robinson, and I want to thank you guys for having, you know, the open public mic. That's a great thing. But I was watching last month's. I really don't know how to say it, but I was kind of, it seemed like there was campaigning going on at the very beginning. And I don't want to go there because I feel like this place is very bipartisan. And I just want to read off something that I kind of thought about while jumping from county to county. But yeah, so ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me here today. I'd like to address, I'd like to address some comments that were made here about our State Representative Dave Hall and share why I believe he's an exceptional advocate for our community. Dave and I campaigned together in 2022, talking to folks from both sides of the aisle. He's someone who collaborates with everyone to get things done. In 2023 and 2024, Dave worked on bills to secure funds for Monroe County. This money is earmarked for improving infrastructure and ensuring our water quality. What's noteworthy is that he worked with Representative Matt Pierce, demonstrating his ability to work across the aisle and the party lines for our benefits. Dave also championed a new law. Now, before students graduate high school, they have to take classes on financial literacy, covering budgets, checkbooks, and other essential skills to be successful adults. Currently, Dave serves as a Vice Chair of the Utilities Committee. He's gaining the trust of his colleagues in the State House, and three out of five of his bills were successful this year with bipartisan support. Being part of the supermajority gives him a more influential voice in the State House, which ultimately benefits our community. I understand that not everyone may agree with Dave, being a Republican, but believe me, he's the right person for the job. He has reached out to many of you to understand the concerns of Monroe County and Bloomington. Dave is dedicated to working hard for us regardless of his political affiliations. Dave Hall is doing an excellent job representing us, and I'm confident he'll continue to do so for years to come. Just, I'd like for you guys to get behind your State Representative 62 because he is working for all of us, and I appreciate you guys letting me speak for him.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We appreciate it. All right, any other public comments either in the Nat U Hill or on Zoom? Raise your hand on Teams, not Zoom, pardon me, or come forward. Going once, twice, we're going to go ahead and move on. Thank you very much. Department updates. We have one pre-scheduled department update from Martha Miller. We've allocated for her about 10 minutes of time. Based on her request for other departments, I'm going to ask you to stay to about three minutes or less, just so that we can get to our agenda this evening. If that presents a hardship, let me know after the meeting and we can have you come back. All right, Ms. Miller, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, counsel. I'll keep it shorter than 10 minutes. How's that? We'll do our best. So I'm Martha Miller with Monroe County Soil and Water Conservation District. I want to thank you all very much for your support of conservation, of just the general practice of trying to protect our environment in the county and what you do, both personal and as a counsel. I appreciate that. We had the unique opportunity in January, myself and my board, to attend a State House event. There were hundreds of conservation-minded folks at the State House. We have, for years, invited legislators to our annual meeting in Indianapolis, and that was not well responded at times. So we took it on the road and went to the State House this year. I do have to say, we reached out personally, I reached out personally to every legislator at the state level. Matt Pierce showed up and spoke to us, and Eric Coach, I never say his name right, spoke to us, and Shelley Yoder made a point to come back and catch us, but we had already gone back to the event. So I want to make sure that you guys know that we're working with our state legislators as well. It was in support of Clean Water Indiana, which is a funding pool that we get from the state as soil and water districts to operate. And because you employ any county employee, they match that at the state level, so we appreciate that as well. We're working with them to try to continue to up that at the state level. We are celebrating 80 years of Monroe County Conservation. That's pretty exciting. So as I'm digging through the archives and records to prepare for this monumental event, I come across some interesting information. One was that since 2013, Monroe County Soil and Water and our federal and state partners have put $6,242, $24257 of conservation on the ground through private landowners. So that's working with private individuals since 2013. Our request for assistance continues to grow. We are just, we're flooded, our federal partners are flooded, so it just continues to grow, but it's exciting to know that this is happening out there. One of those things that we do is watershed work. We have an interactive map on our website in case you want to see it of how it works with the watersheds. Everybody knows about Friends of Lake Monroe and, you know, kind of the awesome stuff that they're doing, but all the other watersheds affect drinking water as well. So we currently are in the planning stages with Bean Blossom. We just got the approval and the go-ahead from Item on that one. Woo! So if we have anybody who wants to be a stakeholder, let me know. Lower Salt Creek, which is where the water from the lake drains into, Lawrence County Soil and Water has that one, but we're partnering with them. We're going to be doing all we can to help the agricultural and urban small farm ag community in that watershed. And then Item has guaranteed us that in 2025, because we also applied for Indian Creek, which is in the southern part of the county, we're the headwaters of that small watershed. But because they were doing a TMDL, they asked us if we would hold off one year, and they've guaranteed us implementation funding as we plan that watershed as well. That's also in Crane, so that will impact the Sentinel Landscape process. For Lower Salt Creek, Monroe County applied for the Mississippi River Basin Initiative funding, and we got $370,000 additional dollars for that project. We also have launched a monthly newsletter. We're trying to really get more people connected to different areas of conservation in that. So we're trying to hit all the vast areas that we cover. If you're not signed up for that, you can do that on our website. We received a Clean Water Indiana grant in 2023 for $22,000 to put toward a new no-till drill. We've not had one of those since almost 35 years, and we've already got a large group of people in line to use that. That's a conservation tool if you want to know more about it. Two local farmers, I just want to point out, who have done some pretty incredible conservation work and have received grants on their own. One is Marble Hill Farms. They received a grant to do experimental wool pellets for soil amendments. It's used highly in specialty crop production, and so they're using their off-market of their wool that they can't sell, and then they're working with other producers to do that as well. And then Silver Mesa Farms is going to host Gyro, I'm naming it, try his last name again, he'll be coming, he's an internationally known soil health scientist, and he'll be coming in August, and we're partnering with them to help put that project together as well. That's it. I'll stop there anyway.
Well, it sounds like a lot of, that's it. So we appreciate that very much. Thank you. I think Counselor Iverson's got a question for you, Martha.
I've got flashing blue.
That means you're being pulled over.
Oh, I should mention, while you're, okay. We also have money from the Lake Monroe Water Fund to do free soil testing. So everybody in Monroe County that's a resident can have a free soil test, so if you're interested, contact us.
That's awesome. Counselor Iverson, is it working?
Okay.
When you were talking, oh, there we go. When you, sorry, when you were talking about the Item project, you used an acronym TMDL. Could you explain that for us?
Sure. Total Maximum Daily Load is, they will pull water samples once a month for 12 months, and then they will pull them at least twice, I think it is, after high-velocity encounters, and they're measuring the total maximum daily load of nutrients. So the number one pollutant in Indiana waters by volume is sediment, and that's an issue that we have statewide. And because Indian Creek was impacted so significantly by I-69, Item has done TMDLs on most other watersheds in the state, but that's one they hadn't. And so that's one that they're looking at, looking at what's polluting those waters. Is it, you know, high phosphorus rates, high nitrogen rates, sediment, is it killing the dissolved oxygen for the wildlife, whatever? So that's what Item will be doing.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Kim.
TSD, TSD stated that only four mics can be going at one time, so if you're not using yours, then turn it off, and then that way somebody else can.
Oh, okay.
I would like to comment that that's a real limitation of our new microphone.
You're not even on, yeah.
But nobody else is talking.
I'm.
Now, I just want to say that not all of us being able to talk at the same time is a real limitation on this council.
Because we like to talk over each other.
Yes.
Constantly.
So, TSD, you've got some work to do here. It's crazy.
I've got blue, if someone can turn it off.
Now I'm on. We will continue to work on that. I think in the meantime, councilors, when you go on, turn it on. When you go off, turn it off. Any other questions for Martha while she's here, other than how to fix the mic? Yeah, Kate Wills.
Well, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to mention your annual meeting that's coming up next month.
Okay.
Because I'm excited.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty real excited. So again, it is our 80th. The district was formed by landowner vote in November of 1943, predominantly agricultural focus at that point. Then we were extended by the state to take on the entire county to address any soil, water, or natural resource concerns throughout the state. And so I actually heard, had the opportunity to hear Hunter Smith, who was a former Colts punter during the Super Bowl days, but he has a specialty crop farm in Zionsville. And I got to hear him at the Small Farm Conference last year. He comes with kind of a, you know, a little bit of a cutting edge, you got to go with an open mind to hear him, but what he says is really important to why the small farm community is so, so important to our health and our well-being and where we're going in the future. So yeah, tickets are online. You can go through Eventbrite, there's QR codes out there everywhere, you can get them, $15 apiece. We are going to have breakfast, One World Catering will be doing that for us. We do have three awards we're going to be giving out, and we've got some folks who are going to table as well. So any conservation partners, open to the public.
That's Saturday, March 23rd.
Yes, Saturday, March 23rd.
Shreve Hall at Ivy Tech.
Shreve Hall at Ivy Tech.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, Martha, I think you've answered all our questions. Thank you so much for making time for this and informing us. We look forward to that March 23 meeting. They're always good, and thank you so much.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Awesome. Now, other departments wishing to make an update, come on forward here in the Nat U Hill. See the sheriff approaching. And Chief Deputy Parker.
So one mic at a time, isn't it? When I, I got to agree, when I heard that, four at a time, wow. So, anyway, my name is Room Marte, Sheriff of Monroe County. This is really quick. As you know, when we first took over, the chief and I and the jail commander sat down and tried to decide what do we need to do quickly, what do we need to do to make things fair in the actual jail? And one of the things that came up was for our Latino residents in there. The reason why I bring that up is because we provide each inmate with a handbook, do's and don'ts, why you're not facility, okay? And to be fair, we didn't have one in Spanish. And we knew for a fact that was going to be a major undertaking to translate that verbiage into Spanish, okay? Because you've got different dialects. So when we took over, reached out to a person by the name of, I really wanted to give her a shout out and a very big thank you, because without her, I wouldn't be able to say this tonight to you. So her name is Hemanah Martinez. She is a Latino Outreach Coordinator for the Community and Family Resources Division for the City of Bloomington. So when we reached out to her, she was more than gracious to say, yes, I would do it. We knew we needed to give her some time to do that, to do it right, correctly, so we could sit in front of you and say, hey, we got this accomplished. But I really want to thank her because it took us some months. Now, that's on top of her responsibility to what she does for the city, okay? So for her to do this, it took a lot of our efforts, and I personally want to thank her tremendously because this was a major deal for us to get this done. I don't think, I don't think Monroe County Sheriff ever has it done before in the past. So this is the first time for all of us. So it's a major hurdle, major, major success story for us to be able to provide residents that speak Spanish and don't understand English their policy for the jail process. So with that being said, again, to Hemanah Martinez, thank you so much for helping the Monroe County Sheriff's out and the citizens of Monroe County. If you have questions of us, we'll be more than happy to answer it to you.
Counselor Crossley.
Does that mean I turn off my mic now?
Just really quick, thank you for that update. Just for us to understand the scope of how that really affects the inmates, can you tell us approximately the percentage of population of Latino inmates we currently have?
It's a small percentage. It really is. But to be fair, you know, how do you, how do you have someone follow the rules if they don't know what the rules are? And then we have people that speak Spanish in the facility, but, you know, how do we make sure that they understand and they, you know, receive the information in a timely manner? So for us, this is really a big, big deal for us because it is a small percentage, but it's still something that needs to be done. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And thank you for the work on that.
Could you give us an update about the population count and how you're feeling about that now? I know it was a real problem just a couple of weeks ago. So is it getting any better?
Right now, the population has dropped, and I give a lot of kudos to the judges and the prosecutor's office. They do a phenomenal job with very difficult situations to keep those numbers low. However, that being said, you know, that could spike at any given time. It really can. And no fault of ours. It's just, it is, you know, what it is. But for now, we're compliant. Doesn't mean by tomorrow, we will be. The prosecutor's office, the judges work really well with us to try to make sure that doesn't happen. But when it does happen, it makes it difficult for us.
I'd like to know if we can get routine updates about how you're using the additional appropriation that we put in place in case you need to move some of the inmates into a different facility. I think we just had a transfer moving around about $30,000. But, you know, that's, is that also going to cover transportation costs and staff costs to move those inmates around? And if you're even lucky enough to find another facility that has an empty bed, how's that working?
Yeah, we've put a contingency plan in for that in case we do see that spike. Fortunately, it went down about as quickly as it came up due to work at the judges and prosecutor. But to answer your question succinctly, we've already made those in-house transfers so that if it does, we're not in the position where we're trying to figure out what we're going to do. And we've made contacts with other agencies that are able and willing to receive those inmates should we need to. But to answer your question about, does that cover the cost of the travel and the manpower? It does not. It simply covers the cost of housing them. We're just going to have to simply kind of knuckle down and handle that. And in fairness, we do transports all the time. It's part of our regular duties, but this would certainly exacerbate that problem if, in fact, we have to do it. But a part of our plan, too, if we do have to transport, we're going to look at those individuals who are there serving a sentence or their court dates are out in the future, so that we don't make the mistake of transporting someone, then three days later, we got to go get them again. So we're planning, trying to make sure that once we transport that person, we're not looking to have to go get them in the immediate future to kind of cut down on those manpower costs, if that makes sense to you.
And do you do the juvenile transports?
We have no juveniles in our facility.
I understand that there's transports that, let's say if a juvenile is placed in a facility and they have to come back to meet with a judge, and they sometimes have to come like the very next day. And so I wondered who was working with those transports.
We have done those in the past in the event we receive a court order to do so. But they're pretty infrequent, to be honest with you.
Right, right.
One more thing I want to make the council aware. We have an issue with the elevator, and I know you know this, but I wanted to give a heads up. We're going to come back to you very fairly soon. It's still, it just broke down recently again. And every time that happens, it's very, very difficult for us to operate. And at this point, we don't even know when it'll be repaired, the last time we checked. So we'll be coming back to you for that.
I think I'd speak for all the council. If we can get periodic updates on when that is fixed, not fixed, and the discussions with the commissioners, I think we'd love to know that as well. We appreciate that. Counselor Iverson?
I don't have much more to add because my question was going to be in that vein. But I will say that the presentation that you all made, where you brought that tube of detritus that you had collected from the sills of the windows, I still hear about that. I still have members of the public reaching out to me, talking about that, and asking me how the jail is doing. And so I just wanted to echo the president's desire to hear more about the facility.
Absolutely. We will definitely keep you up to date as much as we can. Bear with us because when we, when we bring it to you, I mean, it's going to be nothing but the facts. And right now, I can tell you, we're hurting very, very severely right now in the elevator. And it's just, I, you know, sometimes, you know, we repeat ourselves because when I see the staff doing what they have to do and do their job, and they can't do it efficiently because a third party is not living up to what they're supposed to be doing, it's very difficult for us, you know? So, but we will definitely keep you up to speed.
Thank you, Sheriff. We appreciate the leadership and sharing with us in here what's going on. It's always good to have you in here talking with us. Thank you so much. All right, other departments wishing to make an update. See Carlos from the airport coming. Mr. Laverdy.
There we go. All right. Well, yeah, I'll keep it very brief. I just wanted to come say hi and just kind of give you guys an update on just some of the projects we're working on at the Monroe County Airport. It's been an exciting time for us. I think I've talked about this a few times, just mostly because there's still these post-COVID bills and these pots of money that the federal government has set aside for infrastructure projects that we're still working through and trying to take advantage of. And so we're doing a lot of work to try to make these things become a reality. You know, I'm going to a lot of meetings, and my folks at the airport, they're doing a lot of actual work, but we've got a handful of projects just kind of floating around. And I just kind of, I'm going to go to the commissioners as well and just kind of give you guys just a snapshot. I'll try to keep this very brief. But one of the, one of the grants that we recently were awarded by the FAA was a master plan project. It's a, it's a three-year-long, we were just awarded this project just last month. So the total cost of this grant, the total award was $570,000. And it's about a three-year-long study of the airport, which will help us direct the growth of the airport over the next 20 to 30 years. It'll focus on infrastructure, operational improvements, and expansion, possible expansion if there's a, if we determine that there's a need to meet future aviation demands, emphasizing safety, efficiency, and sustainability. So we're really excited about that project. The FAA recommends that there's a master plan study completed about every 20 years, and this will be the first one done at BMG. So everyone from the FAA down to us, we're very happy about this. This is good, this is very good. We're still working on the continuation of the airfield lighting project. This is something that's been going on now for a couple of years, and. And, um, we're just wrapping up phase one, which was the main runway. And we are looking now, we are designing now the crosswind runway and supplementary taxiways. Getting that all, we're gonna submit that kind of as all one big package to kind of wrap this thing up. That could potentially cost up to two point four million, uh, but that would be ninety percent federally funded with a five percent, uh, state share as well. Uh, and then we are also working on an ARPA project, uh, with the county. We've kind of initiated, uh, an analysis of our stormwater drain, our infrastructure there, our, our stormwater drain tiles. And we've got a lot of, uh, where's Martha? We got a lot of erosion going on at the airport that Martha's been helping us with. Um, so we're currently in the design phase of that. There was a design contract awarded for approximately, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand using ARPA funds. Um, that design project should be delivered in April of this year, uh, where we can potentially look at a construction project. We are, we have applied for an air traffic control, uh, tower rehab, uh, grant. This is a bipartisan infrastructure, uh, program. Uh, normally the FAA doesn't fund this for contract towers like we have. Our estimates are this could be approximately a one point seven million dollar project. That would be a hundred percent federally funded. Our tower was, was built in nineteen seventy-three and everything in it, from the radios to the HVAC is, is pretty vintage. So, uh, that is, that is desperately needed. Uh, we applied for an FAA zero emission vehicle grant. That would replace two, uh, of our old, uh, utility, uh, pickup trucks that have been sitting around for decades. They just kind of haul rocks around for us, but it would replace those vehicles with some, uh, a hundred percent electrical pickup truck, electric pickup trucks. Uh, we're, I don't know how that's gonna go. That would be ninety percent federal. Uh, we're, hopefully that would work out and help us reduce our, our carbon footprint at the airport. And then lastly, uh, we're kind of considering, uh, a comprehensive airport project, airport improvement project pursuing, uh, a state ready grant. Some of the, some of the components of a potential project, uh, that we're kind of considering would be, um, a new fuel farm, taxiway, and aircraft parking, uh, parking upgrades, uh, potentially a new terminal building. Uh, with the ready programs expected to request projects in the summer of twenty twenty-four. Uh, with a final decision, uh, on applying, uh, has not been made yet, uh, allowing the airport time for careful consideration. To make sure it's a good fit for us. So I could go on and on. Uh, I'll tell you that we're, we're excited for the eclipse. Uh, we get a lot of questions about that. Uh, if the weather is good, we're, we're prepared to be overrun. Uh, and we've made contingency plans to, to park, uh, aircraft on non-essential, uh, portions of the airport, like our crosswind runway, but we're all set. We've got additional EMS and security, so we're squared away and I'll get out of your hair and I'll be back for item number nine. Any questions?
Hello, um, I have a quick question. Just thinking about what's about to happen to the general area this upcoming weekend with the All-Star game that's happening to Indy. Are we gonna see any traffic, um, like an influx of traffic at the airport? And are we ready for it?
It's a very good que- is that working for me? Yeah, it's a very good question. Um, we never know. We just, we never know. During the Super Bowl for Indianapolis, uh, the Monroe County Airport was an official reliever airport for that function and they did receive a lot of jet traffic. All-Star Weekend, of course, doesn't bring that caliber of traffic, but what we do see is sometimes people with Bloomington affiliations who do come for the event will fly in here, spend some time here, and then just go up for the day. So we don't know. Um, and it, it's really hard to say. Most of those folks who come in, um, they don't, they know we're not gonna be overrun, so they're not calling ahead and making reservations. We are getting calls for the eclipse already. We've got about ten reservations. But that's a very good question. Sometimes we see it, sometimes we don't.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Lavery. It's always good to have you with us. We'll see you in just a bit. Any other departmental updates? All right, see the county treasurer. Kathy Smith.
That better? Good evening, Council. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm addressing you tonight because the February eighth hearing on Bloomington annexation was canceled at the very, very last minute. Those of you, um, who are involved in that case may know. Um, it's, it's a huge case and I'm the defendant, uh, in the case. So I wanted to touch base with you and let you know that the trial date has been set, uh, for April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, which is after the eclipse, right? And so, uh, so anyway, um, I wanted to ask if you had any questions about what happened or, uh, i- if you're worried that me not being auditor anymore is gonna affect that. It, it's not. I'm still be available to, uh, to work with our attorneys and to, um, you know, to answer any questions. We have great attorneys at the county. Um, we took meticulous records we, uh, during the annexation. Um, I, I might have been a little surprised that the city is still going to pursue it at the rate that, you know, that they are. But I, I don't want, I don't want you as the decisions on the moneymakers a- as we develop through this year, move, progress through this year, to have questions regarding how much, uh, revenue we're going to have and not get those questions answered as we move forward. Because even though it is just February, it won't be long. We'll be working on the budget. Kim can tell you people start talking. We start working on it and actually may, and actually may. So I mean, that is pretty, um, it, it's a big process. So I want to make sure that you guys are comfortable with this and that nothing is a surprise moving forward.
Any questions from counsel? Counselor Hawke.
Okay, um, when, when you're looking at that, um, and I'm assuming that you're going to be looking at the financials that, that was put together by the city or, or what? Is there any information that we can review that is pertinent to the case that is a part of public record?
Yes, we know exactly which parcels, um, it covers, each individual area. So basically, the case works like this. If it were your property, and two of my properties are in, are in it, you're in one of these groups. And, uh, you could, um, you could, you could say, look, I, I really don't want this. I don't want to be part of the city. And you could file a remonstrance. And as the auditor, I had to take that remonstrance and I had to make sure that you did two things. That you actually own that property, right? And you were e- exactly in that area. And if you kind of had that mixed up, I'd have to correct that paperwork for you and make sure that paperwork was in good working order. Me or a member of my staff. So we did that for each and every person. We sat down in the, um, rotunda and we were there for several weeks and we met with everyone who came in. We took as much time as it, as it needed, uh, for each person and we helped them out. Now, in addition to that, there were waivers that people had signed when they, when they, when they accepted utility service, okay? And most, and some of the houses weren't even built yet. Like when our, the waiver was signed on my two pieces of property, which both have water service, you know, those houses weren't there. The person who developed the neighborhood, um, signed those waivers a long time ago, before the neighborhood was even developed. And so we'd have to go back and look at ownership and what year that was signed because the, the state government had passed a legislation saying it was only good for so long. So we had to look at those dates. So there was many different attributes we looked at. So of each of those properties, we know when the waiver was signed, we know if it's in the right group, and we can even break it down by, um, by section. And there were different rules on what was, what automatically got kicked out, uh, because the people voted, you know, remonstrant. There was enough remonstrance against it to kick it out, if it was in the middle and had to be decided by a judge, or if it just flat out failed. So I just want to make sure that, you know, to contact me, I'm, I don't want you to, to worry that I'm not gonna be part of this anymore. I'm in it to win it for you guys because, um, you know, from what I saw, people did not want to be annexed. There were just a few who did, but very, very, very few. And so I feel like I have to represent what I saw and what I believe true in my heart.
Thank you very much, Treasurer. You have, you had another one?
Uh, the numbers that I saw, uh, coming from the city, uh, the financial numbers were, you know, from a few years back and we've had a major change in, um,
Assess value, yes, we have.
Amount of revenue that the county has, the amount of, uh, additional spending and, uh, ongoing expenses that was not included, uh, in that report. So I'm, I don't know whether there's updated numbers.
No, things have changed. Another thing that people don't understand is it's not just property taxes. It, it, the other taxes are go where you live. Like the income tax that I pay, um, whether, whether, uh, not just a percentage to the city, but how it's allocated. Once, once I pay it to the county, how is it allocated after that? Also food and beverage tax. There's many more implications. It's just simply property tax. So I just wanted to open the door, or if you had any questions, please come to me even as a treasurer so that I can answer your questions, sit down with you, um, or any, any citizens that's, that's listening to this broadcast tonight to know, yes, I'm not in the auditor's chair, but I'm just right across the office and I'll be glad to help anybody out.
Thank you very much. And as, as was noted in the Long-Term Finance Committee last Friday, um, if the city were not pursuing this, we wouldn't be having long-term impact discussions. And that's always a valid point. All right, we're gonna quickly move on. Any other departments? All right, seeing none, let's move to council liaison updates. Item number six on our agenda. Counselors, any liaison updates? Counselor Crossley.
Just really quick as a liaison to the Women's Commission, um, the Women's Commission here in the county has partnered with the Community Advisory on Public Safety, which is also known as the CAPS Commission and the city. They have, um, an event that's coming up on February twenty-fourth and February twenty-fifth. The event is focusing on reimagining safety. And so on Saturday, February twenty-fourth at four P M. at the IU, uh, cinema, there is going to be a screening on a documentary called Reimagining Safety. And there will be a short Q and A. And then on Sunday, February twenty-fifth at two P M. at the IU School of Public Health in room one twenty-five, there's going to be, um, a panel discussion that's also gonna be a hybrid approach. And it has, um, a safety film expert, director Matthew Solomon, Nick Boyles of Indiana Recovery Alliance, Jordan McIntyre of Bloomington New Leaf New Life, Amber Sherman, um, and Black Liberationists of Memphis, Tennessee, and Max Felker Kanter of Ball State University. So I just wanted to publicly pu- publicly put that out for the Women's Commission and for anybody that is interested in attending this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crossley. Any other counselors on liaison updates? Counselor Wiltz.
Um, yes, I am our liaison to J-RAC and went to my first meeting. And we had a presentation from Linda Grove Paul at Centerstone. And I wanted to just pass along, I know they've gotten the word out in many different ways, but it just never hurts to repeat that nine eight eight is up and running. And that is the number that you call if you need a mental health assistance in, um, in a crisis kind of situation. And one thing that, um, Linda did emphasize that here in our area, um, where we have the Stride Center and also in our neighboring Bartholomew County where they have a second center. If you need assistance on site, call the Stride Center directly. Um, and that number is eight seven seven four six three six five one two. If you need assistance just on the phone and you're not expecting someone to come to your, um, location, call nine eight eight. Otherwise, call the Stride Center and they will, um, get you the help that you need. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Wiltz. Any other liaison reports? All right. Thank you very much. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven now. Board and commission appointments.
Counsel, I move to approve the appointment of Dr. Lisa Hannah Robinson to the Monroe County Board of Health, complete the remainder of a four-year term that expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second. Got a motion and a second? Any comments or questions from the council? I just want to mention in here a moment, I'm gonna ask Dr. Robinson to come forward if you, if you wouldn't mind. Uh, I'm just gonna mention that I, securing great people to serve on boards and commissions i- is, is a hard work. We need more people doing the good job, uh, that Dr. Robinson will do. And, um, it's just, uh, we're, we're lucky for people that come forward. And I was delighted to see her application come through. I remember seeing it come through, I think about at ten forty-two P M. at night. And we were talking the next morning. And so, Doctor, um, we know your service will be notable and great. We appreciate very much you stepping forward to do this. Other comments or questions from counsel? Counselor Hawke.
Yes, it's always great to see a friendly face sitting across here. I know that you are going to take the time to make sure that you, uh, give all of the time necessary to be a great board member. And I know the Health Department will appreciate it. And we met with them just the other day and, uh, the, it was wonderful to see the entire, it, how many members of the board was at that pack meeting. I mean, they really have great interest in what's going on. So look forward to working with you.
Counselor Iverson.
Thank you for being here. I, I see in, uh, the materials you submitted that you have twenty-four years of experience in, uh, family medicine here in Monroe County. What else do you think the public needs to know about you as you embark on this journey with the Health Department?
Sure, if I may, I have, uh, uh, some words prepared. I'll make it short. Thank you, councilmembers, for your vote of confidence today. I'm very excited to become the newest member of the Board of Health. I did apply for this position twice, once in May of twenty twenty-three and did not hear anything and decided two weeks ago to pursue, uh, this again. And persistence does pay off. I'm a graduate of Indiana University School of Medicine. I'm a board-certified family physician with twenty-four years' experience. I have treated thousands of patients. Uh, I have thousands of patient visits per year. I have interactions with those patients, uh, and they also bring concerns to me as constituents. I have my finger on the pulse of our community and am ready to serve. As you know, the Indiana Legislature in twenty twenty-three passed Senate Bill Four and Monroe County received one million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. In twenty twenty-four, Monroe County will most likely opt in for Health First Funds in the amount of three to four million dollars for twenty twenty-five. As a doctor and scientist with a business acumen, my mission is to work with the board members to ensure that every dollar of these monies is well-spent. Our public health programs have to be the most robust possible. There is much work to be done. Priorities for twenty twenty-four are to identify how to meet the requirements for Senate Bill Four. Salary positions make up a large portion of this budget. Defining job descriptions for each position, gathering data to assess where we, where our needs are, and processing data to create the required reports for the state are all crucial sta- tasks that we must accomplish relatively quickly. Monroe County's public health programs are in transition and will also need to have staffing expansion proposals ready to secure the funds for twenty twenty-five. I believe in people power to make positive change. We can work together to accomplish this. Even on this occasion, as I become a member of the Board of Health, the Abraham Lincoln quote from the Gettysburg Address is fitting. He said, "Government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from the earth." I really look forward to working with the staff and the council. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And I just want to echo President Deckard's remarks. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, well-said, Doctor. We appreciate it very much. Other comments or questions from this council? All right, seeing none, we will go to a roll call. Let's, uh, let's do, do a, a roll call. I think that that would be the proper way. Yeah.
Counselor Crossley. Yes, make sure you turn your mics off so we can bounce back and forth. Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Mudson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much. And thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, doctor. We appreciate very much. Your words and your service, they're going to put you to work. Awesome. Let's move on to item B.
Okay. Counsel, I move to approve the revision of councilors Marty Hawke, Jeff McKim, and Peter Iverson to the Personnel Administration Committee.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Little housekeeping unpack. Counselor Iverson.
I'm willing and able.
He's willing and able. He's accepted. Counselor Hawke also noted she's willing and able as well. Seeing no further discussion needed, let's do a voice vote on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Ayes carried it. Thank you so much. Now I think that moves me to the, uh, item 10, the old 10, which is now the new sol- we'll call it the Waste Reduction District Item. Come forward, Mr. McGlasson. Go ahead if you want.
Counsel, I move to approve the Waste Reduction District's request for a fund-to-fund transfer of cash from Fund 8210, operating to Fund 8283 debt service in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. McGlasson, welcome.
Yes, uh, first, thank you for, uh, adjusting the schedule, agenda to accommodate my schedule. Much appreciated. Um, uh, yeah, this, uh, unfortunate situation, uh, where the, uh, the tax dispersment in December, uh, for our, uh, debt obligation fund, uh, was not sufficient, uh, to cover the payment that was due in February. Um, this is, uh, the, the dispersment was correct according to the budget order. Uh, and it was an oversight, uh, on the district staff's part, uh, when the seventeen, seventeen eighty-two came out to review before the budget order, uh, was issued. Uh, unfortunate circumstance, but thankfully, uh, we do have, um, you know, unappropriate excess reserve funds in our operating account, uh, that we are able to transfer. Um, uh, unfortunately, this is a retroactive request. Uh, the debt payment was due on February 1st, uh, so in order to not default, uh, the district did, uh, move the necessary funds to make the payment on time. So, um, you can see what, with what's included in the packet that, uh, that the total transfer amount, uh, is eighteen thousand, six hundred. Uh, the, uh, what was short, uh, to make, to make the necessary payment in the fund, in the account, uh, was little over eighty-two hundred dollars. Uh, however, the account, uh, that, that those funds are held in, uh, the bank does require a minimum ten thousand dollar balance to avoid any unnecessary fees and penalties on that account. Uh, so we are transferring, uh, enough, uh, to cover, uh, that shortfall, the minimum balance requirement. Uh, and additionally, um, another three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, you may recall, uh, last fall, we had to come and seek an additional appropriation, uh, because the bank that manages that bond did increase their annual agency fee. Uh, so we will need that, those additional funds again, uh, later this year when that fee comes due.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Counselor Hawke.
Just a comment that that once again reminds us how important those seventeen eighty-two's are when they come back. And we need to all be prepared to review. Because this could, you know, it, it was a minor amount this time, but it could have been something larger and a lot more problematic for you. And anybody can miss something. So it always takes more than one set of eyes. Uh, so it's just a reminder to us.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none, uh, we will go to a roll call vote. Hold on, let's suspend the vote for a second. I've been chair error. Any members of the public wishing to make a comment on this may come forward in the Nat U Hill, appear to the table, or raise your hand on teams. Thank you for catching that, counselor. Now I see none. Roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Okay, don't forget to mute your mics, please. Okay. Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Munsen.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Have a nice evening. All right, now we're on to item number eight with the Veterans Affairs Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Veteran Affairs Office request to amend the 2024 salary ordinance in Fund 1,000 dash zero zero one two, General Fund Veterans Account Line 1,0043, Benefits Coordinator amending the position titled to Deputy Director Assistant Veterans Service Officer for the classification to a PAT A, non-exempt at forty hours weekly with an effective date of February 11th, 2024.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I want to welcome Mr. Miller to tell us what we need to know. Then I'm going to ask for PAC chair, or who's my PAC chair on this one? That was you. I'm going to ask you just for an update on this.
Very good. First of all, thank you, counsel, very much for having us today. It's really an honor to be in front of you today. Um, in November of 2023, I went through the process of requesting Andrew's job to be upgraded. And we're happy to say that Wes has come back with a formal recommendation to upgrade his position. Uh, we're very excited in our office for this opportunity. Uh, this, uh, change is going to allow for, um, two fully fledged service officers to serve the almost seven thousand veterans in Monroe County. We'll be taking, um, our, uh, our game up several notches by being able to, uh, now do what Andrew will be at tomorrow at the Indiana Center for Recovery to meet 12 new veteran clients, uh, that we're going to help with VA, uh, claims. So we're just very excited and, uh, happy to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Go to Counselor Crossley on behalf of PAC.
Yes, on my brief, short time there on PAT. Uh, this was a really, um, very quick streamlined, easy-peasy conversation. Um, it just sounds like the demand of your office is very high and you are wanting to, willing to serve, um, the community, especially because we have a lot of veterans that are in desperate need. Um, and you all are taken up to the challenge for that. And Wes saw that there was indeed a change of, um, job and therefore, uh, recommended this. So it passed through flying colors, um, on PAC and it is here now.
Thank you, Counselor Crossley. Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I don't believe that PAC made the decision about the number of hours. I think we determined that was not our decision to make. Uh, so this did not come forward saying we recommend forty hours.
So that falls to council to make that.
That's a fiscal situation.
Thank you for the distinction. So we do have the motion with those hours as read. Other comments? Counselor Munsen.
Thank you. I would like to hear, uh, more about, uh, the need for expanding the number of hours so we can deal with that business tonight.
Sure. Um, as we move forward, uh, our intention is to be in the, in, excuse me, in the community more frequently. Uh, do, we regularly attend meetings of different veteran service organizations with, um, McHeck, with, uh, Counselor Deckard, um, various other, um, organizations that we're in. We, our intention is to expand and grow that so that we're in the, um, uh, environment with veterans more frequently so that we can meet and meet the needs of those folks as they, as they come to us. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Munsen. Other questions or comments? Counselor Hawke.
No, go ahead.
Oh, no. Uh, I just want to note as liaison to veteran services, I recall when this conversation initiated. It's been a little bit. Um, and I, just to make a general comment, I appreciate very much, that was 12 veterans in the Indiana Recovery Center that we'll meet with. That number alone, right there, I think demonstrates something very significant to all of us and everyone else in elected positions and really out there in the community that are just watching. Um, as I think I shared with Mr. Miller way back when we first talked about this, I see the service that we do to our veterans, knowing the community, how many veterans we have. I see that service probably growing over time. And I do see this as a significant portion of, of, of taking that step. And just to give you just an idea on the flip end, where that ends up benefiting, I happened to have a conversation last Friday with a constituent who has a family member being served by this office. And that constituent was beaming with the assistance and the clarity and the help that they're getting to sort things out for this person who has served this nation upon its request overseas. And I think that that drives at home. My, my chest was swelling. I couldn't have been prouder if that had been my own kid. And so I just, I, I think that this is a, uh, this is a moment where we're doing, living our values of our folks in all their walks of life, and particularly folks who have served, uh, when asked, and now they asked to be served. Uh, so with that, I'll, I'll be quiet. Other comments from Counselor McKim?
Thank you. Yes, actually, I wanted to address the five, the, um, move from thirty-five to forty hours. Um, I'm going to say, you know, if it were up to me and we had the money, I'd, I'd vote to make every thirty-five hour position forty hours, uh, right away. I, I don't like the system we have where basically each department kind of has to make the case individually for, uh, you know, for increasing the, um, uh, the hours to, to forty hours. So I, my bias though is to go, is to go with forty whenever possible. And I, you've certainly made the case, uh, that those additional hours are benefi- beneficial to the county. Like I said, I wish we had the money where we could just not make departments have to, uh, approach us individually. But, um, I do, I support this motion as read. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from council?
Yeah, the only thing, uh, that my comment is, it sounds to me like they're both be, going to be doing rather equal jobs. And I, I really don't know, i- it's difficult for me to see why Wes came back to say this is a non-exempt position because, uh, the director is non-exempt, correct? I mean, you don't get paid overtime. You don't collect comp time.
Correct, I am exempt. Exempt, yeah.
You are exempt. And so I would, I really think that they're both doing the same thing. How could Wes end up with one exempt and the other one not? Just.
One is a manager.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying that it, it is strange to me, but then a lot of things Wes does lately is strange. So at any rate, I'm happy that you're fully staffed and that you're going to be out there really servicing our veterans because, and, and their families, because it's not always the veterans. Sometimes it's the widow or, or something of that sort. And so those folks need to have one-on-one assistance to make certain they are taken very good care of.
Thank you so much for that vote of support. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Iverson, you had a comment?
Yeah, uh, thanks for being here and, and congratulations on getting through the process. I know it can be a little hairy. Uh, one of the things that this council is very proud of is supporting the Heading Home Project. And I know that they've set an initiative to address veterans who are experiencing homelessness. Uh, does this position and expansion of hours help with those efforts?
Absolutely. In fact, um, we just spent, um, Monday afternoon with the Heading Home staff working on, uh, diversion, uh, work, trying to figure out how to divert folks from a critical, um, near homeless state to actually becoming homeless. So we are working directly with those folks to try to come up with, um, programs and processes that will help to not only stop folks from becoming hopeless, homeless, but also to help folks when they are. And we have a case conferencing that we, we do every other Wednesday with all of the, um, folks in the homeless, uh, space here in, in Monroe County. And we go line by line, person by person, finding out next steps and coming up with ideas and ways that we can help them get, um, from their homeless situation back into a permanent supported house.
Yeah, that, that just gives me so much faith in supporting that Heading Home initiative. It really sounds like we're really tackling it.
It's, it's truly a fantastic organization. We're happy to be working with them.
Thank you, Mr. M.
Thank you. And, and one note is on the, the, the ongoing Wes discussions exempt, non-exempt, that could be a PAC consideration that, that maybe comes back and talks to us down the road. All right, I'm hearing no more further comments on the business at present. And so with that, we will take comments from the public. If you have a comment on this here in the Nat U Hill, we ask you to come on forward. We'll make some space for you. If you're on teams and have a comment, raise your hand. I'm seeing none. So we're going to go ahead to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munsen.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you for your service.
And I wanted to let the council know that I am working with, uh, Mr. Miller with regards to his budget. And we have set a date in September to like review his budgets to see when he, uh, might need to, uh, ask for additionals. But I'm going to work with him with regards to making in-house transfers.
Thank you, Kim.
Or category.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you very much.
And on, on that note, thank you, Kim Shell, for all of your help. You've, I wouldn't have made it anywhere near this part. So thank you.
She keeps us moving, doesn't she? All right, that takes us now to item number nine. Mr. Lavery's going to come back up for aviation.
Counsel, I move to approve the Aviation's Director request for an additional appropriation in Fund 4801 dash zero 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 zero, Aviation Construction in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-seven cents in this, or business category.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Mr. Lavery, what do we need to know?
Okay, let me get to the wrong stack here.
You're fine.
All these projects.
It's a good headache to have, right?
Yeah, again, I am sorry. I've got the wrong glasses on again. Okay. I do. Okay, the, uh, sorry. All right. The airport is requesting additional appropriation in the contractual line to cover the following items. Number one, being Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, uh, tasked to complete a study. I've got the wrong comments here. I had.
Would it help for us to come back to you?
No, I can, I can wing it.
Okay.
But I wanted to sound so much more professional.
You're doing fine.
Here we go. Okay. Okay, item number one, we got the Monroe County Board of Aviation Commissioners signed an agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly to complete a catchment study. This study is to provide an analysis of airline passenger behaviors within the BMG catchment area. This information will be incorporated into a terminal building feasibility study. And the total for that study was two hundred, uh, twenty-two thousand dollars, six hundred and, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Number two, in late 2023, an airport tenant, uh, in their vehicle struck a security gate causing significant damage. An insurance claim was submitted and payment was received. Uh, during the, those repairs though, it was decided that due to the age of some of the inner workings of the, uh, the gate equipment, uh, that upgrading was needed to bring some of this stuff up to code. Uh, the insurance reimbursement totaled twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the upgrades totaled seventeen thousand, seven hundred, thirteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Uh, therefore, we are requesting an additional appropriation of forty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents in the four eight zero one construction fund. Item number three, the airport storm sewer culvert lining under taxiway Alpha. Uh, Interliner Solutions, uh, will clean, flush, and install four hundred and eighty, um, line feet of heavy lining inside of a drain situated under taxiway Alpha. This was a significant, uh, an urgent ask that we had of, of council a while back to appropriate this for us or to approve this action for us. Um, so that signed contract was seventy thousand, eight hundred dollars. Lent paving, uh, saw cut into the pavement to allow us access to that drain. And then they came back and repaved that with asphalt at a later time. And that contract was for twenty-seven thousand, uh, fifty dollars. The total of that portion is ninety-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty, ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Number four, uh, the Monroe County Board of Aviation Commissioners approved and signed three, three agreements with Wolfert. Uh, seventy-three thousand, three hundred dollars for a feasibility study for. Uh, seventy-three thousand, three hundred dollars for a feasibility study for a, uh, airport terminal building. Sixteen thousand dollars for air traffic control assessment change order number one to review existing data and information gathering HVAC cost estimate. And, uh, six thousand dollars to design a, um, to design and, and draw up a, uh, a self-serve fuel farm. A potential self-serve fuel farm at the airport.
Thank you very much. We'll go to questions from counsel. Counselor Hawk first.
Yes, I see that, uh, you're asking for these dollars that'll be coming out of the, uh, construction fund. Um, and it might have been in the packet, but I don't recall seeing the balances in that fund. Do you, do you see it? Was that in the packet? I, I reviewed it and I didn't see that.
I'll pull it up here in just a moment. It was in the packet.
It was?
Page twenty.
Okay, I'm... But that does beg the question about the numbers on that page. The numbers on that page, yeah.
So we've located it in the packet.
I'm, I'm seeing the, the request is on page twenty.
Right.
And then go to the very next page.
Five hundred, five thousand, seven hundred, six dollars is what's listed in the packet.
Okay, I see it's on down further. I gave up too quick. I see it. That's a, that's a balance. But what, was anything else appropriated out of that?
Cash balance, got it. Thank you.
To change that appropriation, has there been anything appropriated in that fund that has not been paid out?
Well, it looks like in that table, a hundred and eight thousand, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and most of that has been expended. There's a small unexpended, eleven thousand dollar unexpended balance.
So it's plenty large.
Okay.
Counselor McKim?
Yeah, uh, thank you. First of all, I'm excited about the possibility of a self-serve fuel farm. That's great. Um, can you tell me, uh, I didn't quite understand what the HVAC cost estimate was for.
We did an initial assessment earlier last year. Uh, and then we found out as we were preparing the grant for the refurbishment that there is a additional requirement now for control towers to have redundant HVAC. So we had to bring another crew back just to assess the HVAC system.
Okay.
Yeah, there wa- cuz that was not part of the initial assessment.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Iverson?
So I've been out to the airport a couple times now. We've, we've talked and I, your vision is, uh, it, it's captivating for what you think the airport can be. And I see this terminal expenditures in here. Can you talk a little bit about what does that mean for the Bloomington Airport, the Monroe County Airport to have a terminal?
Well, yeah, we don't really have a terminal per se. Uh, as, as, as I sit there today, there's a building that we call the terminal, but it's not, you know, it's four thousand square feet and three or four offices in a boardroom. There's no, there's no passenger lounge, there's no, uh, twenty-four-seven, um, available pilot areas for flight planning or, you know, you can shower, use a restroom. There's nothing like that. We don't have anything like that. Um, sure, we don't have airline service today, but you don't have to necessarily have airline service to have a public terminal building. Um, but I'm just down the road, the Columbus Airport has one. It's a fairly common concept. But when I look at what our airport does today, we, we serve a significant portion of the visiting community, in the, in the visiting business traffic that comes into this community. And, uh, we just don't have, we're a first-class community and we don't have a, a first-class facility at this airport. When I see these, these people, they land, I can see the, the plane does, like the pilot doesn't know where to park. Like, there's just like a handful of hangars out there and our FBOs do a great job. And when you walk into the FBOs, they're beautiful on the inside, but those are private entities and they're not open twenty-four-seven. So I envision a terminal building, uh, that will accommodate our, our flying, you know, visitors and our, our home-based tenants too, but we'll have twenty-four-seven facilities. Um, it will be something that would be, you know, something that the community could be proud of when you land at, you know, Monroe County Airport, uh, there's a statement and you kinda know that you're in a community of, of, uh, of, you know, of a stature. And I think for the university, who's one of our biggest customers with, uh, the airlines, um, I mean, this year, I think we're on, we're already on pace to break another record for our, our airline charters. Um, I think over the last couple of years, if I'm not mistaken, I think since two thousand and fifteen, the airline charters have gone up. I think it's three hundred percent, you know, the, it's, it's quite significant. And when you take those student athletes who are flying in and out of the airport as often as they are, we don't have any, um, there's no, there's nowhere for them to sit. So a plane just landed this evening. Uh, it was a United Airlines seven-three-seven-nine-hundred. And, you know, forgive me, I don't know which team it was, but they have to sit in their cars, uh, on, in a grass lot and, and wait for this plane to come. And if the plane's late, they have to sit in their cars even longer. Um, and I think as a community, you know, those are, those are our citizens, our students, and that's one of our institutions. And, uh, and I think that we can just do, I think we can do better. And then we, we looked at that catchment analysis. And so, yeah, we're looking at possibly building a terminal. Uh, and, you know, are we committed to that? No. But we're trying to take the right steps to assess the feasibility and to see if that's the right move. And part of that was the catchment analysis. And, yeah, we hired a consultant to go out and determine what our catchment area is, what the population, uh, is there? And what are their habits? Where do they go? How often do they go? And, uh, we're still kind of sifting through that data, um, but it, it's pretty interesting. And Purdue University, which just, uh, was awarded a grant for a terminal building, uh, through the Ready Program, um, their, their, uh, it doesn't, I don't think that their demographics and, and their catchment analysis was, was very different from ours. And, um, their terminal building for the new airline service that they're hoping to get at that time wasn't built yet. And they had already acquired, uh, just recently acquired airline service. So, you know, I think there's a potential, you know, I don't know if that's what we need. We don't necessarily need a terminal for airline service, and I don't know if we necessarily need airline service. Uh, that'll be determined, but we're just trying to make the right steps. But, uh, and also just trying to do what's right for the community.
Yeah, you know, we, we talk a lot about economic development on this body, whether it's expanding the convention center or youth sports coming out at CARSS. And I think the airport's gotta be part of that c- conversation. We've just got too many businesses, too many jobs coming to this community to not have the airport be part of that conversation. So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I was one of the four that was off. Uh, we'll go now to public comment. Folks in the Nat U Hill, please come forward to the table to talk or raise your hand on Teams. I am not seeing any. We'll go ahead to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavery. Uh, we'll now move on to item eleven, emergency management.
Counsel, I move to approve the emergency management department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund forty-nine thirty-eight dash ninety-six twenty-four, emergency manager, management Duke Grant in the amount of five thousand, five hundred in the supplies category.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. And I see on Teams, Mr. Baker from Emergency Management. The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, counsel. Yes, uh, I am happy to sa- pronounce that the department has recently avert, was recently awarded a new grant through the Duke Energy Foundation. This grant will be utilized to purchase several all-hazard NOAA letter radios to help provide an effective letter awarding device to residents and businesses in Monroe County that are within high-risk areas such as mobile home areas and other places that may face more severe impacts from severe weather threats.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go to questions from the council or comments. Counselor Iverson?
Uh, thank you for being here today, Mr. Baker. You know, I was just out with the assessor's office looking at some of the tornado damage in our county. And I, I can't help but think that these, uh, are gonna be very helpful, uh, given the severe weather that, uh, most assuredly is going to return. So I think this is a great grant and thank you for pursuing it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other counselors? I'm not seeing any. We will then go to comments from the public. You can come forward here in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. And I'm seeing no signals for that. We'll go ahead to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. That takes us to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the emergency management department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund eighty-one seventy-four dash zero 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 hazardous materials in the amount of seventeen thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars in the services category.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Mr. Baker, what can you tell us?
Yes, we are also happy to present that we received another grant from the US Department of Transportation. And it's through the hazardous material emergency preparedness program. And this, this grant will help fund, uh, a hazmat IQ training course for local first responders later this year. Um, it will help, this training will help aid the first responders to help refresh their skills and the hazardous materials.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions from counsel? Of course, we do always wanna add, we appreciate going after grants that bring dollars into the community. Yes, Molly Turner King, county attorney.
I would bring to counsel's attention that this grant, um, is, the documentation provided currently is just an award letter. We do not have a contract for this grant. And I think this brings into question, a policy question for counsel, um, whether you're comfortable doing an appropriation off an award letter, which does have inherent risk, or if you would prefer to have the appropriation with contract in hand. Um, both the auditor's office and county legal have been working on updating our grant policy. Um, cur- that has been, that's taking a little longer than what we would like because we're looking at, we're getting a demonstration of grant management software. Um, and I think that county legal prefers a contract in hand, um, for, to eliminate the inherent risk of what happens if, you know, the grant doesn't fall, if, what if we don't get the amount of money listed in that award letter? And I think that the auditor's office agrees with, um, wanting a contract in hand. But I think it is a policy decision for the council. I believe that, uh, the auditor also has comments to share on that.
Yeah, we'll go to the auditor. Congratulations, by the way. We haven't said that and we should have. We have a brand-new auditor, Brianna Gregory, and we are, uh, happy to serve with you. So welcome and weigh in in your new role.
Thank you very much. Um, I just have a few notes, um, just to piggyback off, um, Ms. Turner King's, um, comments. We are working with Commissioner's Office and County Legal on a new, um, amendment to our, uh, grant procedure and policy. And, um, as she mentioned, this has been in limbo as we wait a demonstration. We actually have that meeting next week. Um, and this software, we're excited about the possibility of utilizing because it works with our current financial software, which will be great. Um, so the legal team and the auditor staff believe it's best practice to appropriate with a contract rather than an award letter. An award letter is an intention to provide funding. Um, it's not, a contract is binding. Um, so using a contract ensures public transparency. If appropriating with an award letter, the contract does not come through, the county is on the hook for the expenses, um, that are then paid with tax dollars. Um, grant appropriations may only be carried forward year-to-year if a contract is in place. So if we appropriate prior to having that contract and then the end of the year comes, we have to do additional appropriations anyhow. So, um, also with reporting, with regard to reporting, um, the, as you are well aware, the auditor's office is responsible for preparing and submitting annual financial reports. As part of the report, we prepare a SIFA, which is a schedule of expenditures of federal awards. Um, this is completed annually as part of the annual financial report. Required fields in this report are contract number and performance period, which are often not included in that grant award letter. So, um, it'd be non-compliance not to have that and reported appropriately if we do not have it at the time of the report. Another reporting issue occurred with, um, the twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one GAAP report, which is the Generally Accepted Accounting Principles Report that is also annual. Um, the audit came back with findings of material misstatements directly related to federal grant projects. Um, and that was largely because, um, of cleanup and, um, management that needs to occur a little bit differently. We've been collaborating with county departments to correct issues related to grant funds. Everybody's been working really hard, departments and my office, particularly, um, Carly Woodruff, the new, um, financial director. Um, part of this work has been complete reconcili- reconciliation of many grant funds and making corrections where either expenditures related to the grant were taken from incorrect funds or receipts were deposited into incorrect funds, um, rather than the grant fund. So with these grant dollars, the receipts and expenditures need to be in the same fund. That's part of the management. Um, this has been a time-consuming project. As you can imagine, we're not, we're not finished. There's a lot more work to do, um, on both the auditor staff and other departments. And, um, we even updated the general ledger position recently to the general ledger and grants management position to better reflect what this person's been doing, which is spending the majority of their time managing grants. So just wanted to share, um, that information and my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. I, I've had a lot of calls and discussions about this myself. I'm gonna defer to other counselors before offering some thoughts from here. Other counselors? Yeah, Counselor Munson?
Counselor Hawk and I have been, uh, having a little sidebar discussion. And we, we see things differently. I'm familiar with other institutions and how they handle, uh, grant contracts. And I have had experience directly with, um, spending that took place before a contract was in hand. And this caused, uh, all end of confusion. This was not Monroe County government, by the way. And it caused all kinds of confusion. I would prefer to see the contract in place. But, um, but Ms. Hawk says, uh, being able to, uh, begin work, uh, be...
When, not before the contract.
Uh, that no actual, uh, paid work takes place, uh, until the contract is in hand. But prep, prep work takes place, the paperwork, getting ready for it. But I don't see the difference. I think if you say the policy is to have the contract before any, uh, uh, work takes place that is charged to the grant, then, uh, then that makes, uh, perfect sense. And the, the preparatory paperwork can go on, uh, while waiting for that grant to actually show up in the county.
Uh, I just wanna note also, Mr. Baker, I, I appreciate on your item, you're letting us talk through something that is of a significant discussion beyond emergency management. So just bear with us as we talk it through. Yeah.
I, of course, don't want people to spend money until they've got the money ready, you know, the contract signed. But I, I also know there's some departments that they rely so heavily on these major grants. And what they want to do is the minute that that contract comes in and they're ready to go, they don't wanna wait on us to have a meeting and a meeting and a meeting.
Advertise, yeah.
And, and we're talking... And we're talking millions of dollars here, and they should not, and these people know they are not going to spend from an appropriation. Look, folks, an appropriation is only the authority to spend. That doesn't say you spend it without the contract. It gives them the authority to spend it once a contract is in place. So when we delay, when we do anything that delays it, maybe we need an additional person in the auditor's office or whatever. And we're talking major differences here so that the, that our departments that rely heavily, heavily on gigantic contracts. And they need to be ready to fly out the door the minute that's in place. Now, I don't want to spend one penny until it's in place, but that's my thought.
Thank you, Counselor Hawke. Counselor McKim?
I, I guess I'm trying to just understand the mechanics of this. So this is, this particular request is for money in the services. Is appropriation of the services category. Does this fund have an existing cash balance? Or is this created de novo for this, this grant? Well, I guess what I'm really trying to get at is how mechanically would the department even go about spending the money before the money has actually been received? How, how does that work?
So many of these grants are reimbursable. So we can't, we can't have the appropriation go negative. You have to have that permission to spend. But for reimbursable grants, the cash can go negative and then we wait for reimbursement. So if that, if that grant doesn't come through, then, like I said, then we don't get that reimbursement.
Okay, all right. So they could theoretically contract for the, for whatever services are being provided here. The cash could go negative. Something goes, goes askew with the, with the contract and we wind up in the hole.
Right. And often these award letters, I mean, they're all different, but some of them don't provide the pertinent information to even like budget properly, for example. Some of them are complex. They won't tell us like the county's match or et cetera. There's just different information included into different award letters and grant agreements.
Michelle, you had something to add?
Yes, there is nothing appropriated in that fund currently. That's why there wasn't a report. So in the packet. So there's nothing appropriated right at this moment.
Yeah, okay.
So just a point of order question, just to follow up on what he's saying. If they had no money in there, they could do nothing even though we would authorize now, right? Okay.
If it's a reimbursable grant, they would be able to spend prior to the official contract. And I haven't done, I haven't researched this one in depth, so I can't tell you right now if it's reimbursable or not.
But if it's sitting at zero in there now and the money's not come in, it would.
But it can go negative if it's reimbursable.
Okay. I saw another hand for comments over here. Was it Counselor Wiltz?
Question, actually. Just in the spirit of, I know you're trying to figure this all out. Do you, does your office see the paperwork that goes into the application for these grants?
Not always. If it's included in one of your packets, but we're not usually involved in the application process. Sometimes the commissioners are involved. I think they typically, I think they almost always approve the grant contracts, but they're not always involved in the application process, is my understanding.
So having, I'm just thinking that having somebody who, in your office, who does see those applications, that provides that context for, that you said sometimes is missing from the award letter, like matching or other expectations. It's not the same as a contract. I get it.
And it's, it depends on, it just depends on the application too. It may or may not say if there's a required match and so forth.
So is it possible then to appropriate based on an award letter, but then provide policy guidance that only X percent could be spent up till? I mean, I don't know. Can we do anything like that where we put limitations to mitigate our risk? That's a question for everybody. I don't know.
I think it would be really hard to enforce and manage, but until we begin, I, it's hard to say.
Because I, I do respect the idea that when they do get that contract, I mean, sometimes they've been waiting months. And they need, they, that window for actually getting the work done is closing because the contract doesn't always move that window along. It just gets smaller.
How we've handled that recently is budgeting elsewhere. And then when that contract does come through, we just simply move those expenses to where they should be then in the grant fund.
But how does that change the fact that if the grant contract didn't come through, we still have spent the money, no matter what account you use?
It's just, it feels more transparent than to me anyway, to the public, because it's being budgeted with county funds rather than grant funds. They're all county funds when we receive them, but.
Yeah, my, if I, if I can, counselors weigh in just a little bit from the chair. I, I've taken a lot of calls on this. And I have to say, I, I'm a little worried about it from a number of perspectives. We have some brilliant elected officials, department heads, one of which is the newest one that has joined the chorus. But I, my worry is the following, because here's what I'm sort of hearing. I'm sort of hearing that the number one, counsel, I'm going to use the prosecutor's office in the stop grant. We've had that on our agenda since Counselor Wiltz was celebrating fall and in my chair. And we've spent a lot of staff time and just period time as a council, moving that forward, moving that forward, moving that forward, moving that forward, with the hopes that it's, that we've got it. Now we have it. We're going to deal with it here, hopefully later tonight with an affirmative vote. But that's been a, a long time coming. It has come in. And my, my worry is anything we do that inhibits grants coming in, grants being used, or departments going after grants. Let me just say that. Going, thank you. Going after grants, because we rely on millions. I mean, I'm going to ballpark that, millions upon millions to come in. And so I'm wondering if there's not a happy medium where we find language that gives you all peace from financial good stewardship, because that's your job. And that's our job too, but also allows them to go after what they, they go after. I'm going to give, use highway as another example. The highway grants we pull in could not be funded otherwise. We have a beautiful relationship with NDOT in getting those funds. I don't know how she does it. She's got it done. I want to make sure that never stops. And so I wonder if we can get some language that allows us to do what we do, allows everyone to see inside the barn, to see what, how many horses we have and how many we've sold, so it's accurate. But it honors that process of bringing money in, because these depart, emergency management is doing its job in bringing that in. You're doing the job and saying, hey, look, we got to make sure. And to me, a, a letter of intent is strong. I wonder how we make it stronger for our system. And so that's just, just some initial thoughts there. I wonder if there's not a happy medium here on some of this. Other thoughts? Counselor Munson, and then I'll go to you, Mr. Baker. Counselor Munson.
So I'm concerned about emergency management's particular grant here and not holding them up. But I want to ask Mr. Baker, are your, is your training program scheduled for a date that's in the near future? Or is there some time to give county government an opportunity to develop its policy more clearly?
We were hoping to do it early summer, but I mean, we can hold it, yeah, we can hold it.
I, I think. Yeah. So.
Yeah.
But thank you. So it's early summer.
It's, no, yeah.
Good to know.
Um, we haven't scheduled nothing because we don't do nothing until we get the, everything signed and approved and stuff. Nothing's been done. We just got the, I do want to say, I don't know if this is considered a contract per se, but we do have the sub grant A agreement through the state that is presented to the commissioners and the state. And it's usually signed by DocuSign. And I don't know, and it's a little bit more lengthy. I did, I didn't think about sending it to, with this grant, but I did have sent it in the past. So I don't know if that might solve some of the issues or.
I don't think, I don't see it as an issue, but the other point I wish to make is that it's very difficult for us to come, come up with a policy when there's multiple viewpoints here. And I think we should direct this to a future meeting to actually discuss the policy and have the council weigh in on whatever our advisors tell us.
Okay, so we can deal with the present question per Counselor Munson's suggestion and deal long term with the larger issue. And Mr. Baker, we appreciate you letting us figure something else out while we figure something else out. All right, let's go to the present question. Any comments on that? All right, seeing none, I'm going to welcome public comment here in the Nat U Hill or via teams. Raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baker, for letting us borrow some of your time here. We appreciate it. You're a patient man. Let's move on to item number twelve.
Counsel, I move to approve the court's request to add a new account line, three zero zero two four depositions and fund one zero 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 dash zero two two five general fund courts.
Second.
Okay, we're, we are happy to have Judge Stafford with us today as well as Ms. Abraham.
Okay, in my court's budget, I have a line for public defenders, and those are my outside counsel that is appointed when there's a conflict in the public defender's office. I'm asking for another line that will encompass depositions, investigation and expert witnesses. Because right now I pay those out of special services, and I've kind of watched over the last few years, it is going up drastically. Right now, I have spent in those three lines, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents, and it's only February. I have fifteen thousand in that line for the entire year, which means my normal stuff that I pay at special services, I'm already having to transfer this early on. I can also tell you, I have another thirteen thousand five hundred that is coming out of, or more bills that are coming in. So I'm really looking at, I've got forty-three thousand four fifty-six eighty-eight. So I can't pay those out of my public defender line. They have to come out of separate. So I'm asking a new line to be created. I know I've talked to Michelle, and there is one that's available that I can use. And I can transfer then some money right now out of my public defender line into that to cover. But I cannot retire. I'll be back very soon for both additionals in public defender. I've had quite a few murder cases last year. That's what most of these are, is all in murder cases. Whether, my public defenders are using investigators, obviously they have to take depositions of witnesses and expert witnesses. So it's, like I said, it's just starting, but it's going to get worse.
Thank you very much. Judge, you want to add anything?
I have nothing to add on that item. I'll be speaking on B.
Gotcha. Thank you, Judge. Any questions or comments from counsel? Counselor Hawke?
Just that we'd been advised that this was probably coming down the road. We'd already heard this from yours. And so I think we just need to have that line. They can do the transfers around and let us know when you get to the point where you can't transfer.
Probably by summer.
All right, other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll take comments from the public. If you're in the Nat U Hill, come forward to do so or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote. Oh, whoops.
For just creating a line?
No, no, you can do, that's what I was going to say. You can do a voice vote to create just a line.
Let's do a boy, boy, let's do that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, now, we'll, thank you, we'll go on to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the court's request for an additional appropriation and fund ninety-one thirteen dash zero 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 family court grant in the amount of forty-six thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents in the services category.
Second.
Okay, again, for another year goes by and we got another, the same grant that we've had for many, many years now for council and court grant covers this. And Judge Stafford is here because she's in charge of the grant, so she's going to explain it more in detail.
Thank you all for having us. I appreciate very much the opportunity to talk to you. In a way, this grant is kind of like a baby version of a public defender's office, but for civil cases. As I'm sure you're aware, Gideon provides, is, is the US Supreme Court case that provides for a right to an attorney in a criminal case. There is no right to an attorney in a civil case. Those cases can include evictions. Those cases can include cases where you might be losing custody of your children or losing parenting time with your children. These are issues that affect all of us at a deep personal level and are extremely important. This grant provides for two and a half hours twice a month for an attorney to come in and be at the justice building here on the corner of Seventh and College. And for people to come in and ask questions and have help preparing documents. As a family court judge and as a judge who also provides over small claims and eviction cases, litigants without attorneys take an outsized amount of time because they do not know the system and they don't understand the system. Under the code of judicial conduct, I can do my very best to help level that playing field, but of course, I cannot cross into giving legal advice to one side or the other. I can't tell them how to serve their case. I can't tell them how to prepare their case, what witnesses to call, what exhibits to bring, or how to prepare their documents. That would be completely unethical and unfair. Having counsel in the court is critical to help people at least get some walk-in legal advice. They don't go to court with them. They don't enter an appearance or do full representation, but they are there to help walk people through the very beginning steps or some of the steps of getting their court case proceeding and what they need to do. When I was in private practice, I volunteered at counsel in the court once a month and spent hours with folks, helping them draft those documents and answer questions about how to prepare for court. So I've been in that trench for, for many months, for many years prior to joining the bench. And it's my hope that you'll allow us to keep on working on this project. And thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Judge. Counselor McKim?
Yeah, thank you very much. Is two and a half hours twice a month anywhere near enough time?
Absolutely not. The, I, I have been proposing a self-help legal center. The Board of Judges is working on that. It's certainly not approved yet. We're hoping to develop that. I'm hoping to develop that. Even if we were to fully develop that, that would be one attorney and a paralegal providing legal advice to all people on civil cases, which is thousands of people. As opposed to, for example, a fairly fully staffed public defender's office with multiple, multiple attorneys for, for the folks in that case. But at least it would be a help. For example, we had somebody in a mental health court recently who had a question about how do they get their name changed in a divorce if the divorce was already granted? We need to send that person to the self-help legal center. I frequently have people who are filing for an order of protection in a domestic violence case who don't know how to get service on the other side because the other side has fled. Sometimes there's a related criminal case and they don't want to get served with a warrant. Sometimes there are other issues going on and a self-help legal center could help provide information on service or process. So it, it's a drop in the bucket, but as the poster says, it matters to that drop. It matters to that starfish. We need to do everything that we can.
And so how are, how is that time allocated out? Is it just first come, first served?
It is generally. We are very excited that this grant now offers telephone interaction as well as walk-in services. And this is a combined grant for Green, Lawrence, Owen and Monroe counties. With Monroe County is the fiscal agent for, for the counties. The, there's a long story behind that, but I'll, I'll not bore you with that. This is the way we've done it now for several years. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yes, and so the two and a half hours twice a month, is that specifically for Monroe County?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There are other times for other counties, but the two and a half hours is on the second and the fourth Friday of every month at the justice building on the third floor. And we have posters made up that show all the dates for the rest of the year. They're laminated in various places around. And we have a front and back list of legal resources. We give out to people very frequently if it looks like they need some legal assistance, directing them to that.
Thank you. We really do need that, that self-help legal assistance center.
Maybe the city will pay for it.
Keeping to the topic at hand. Other comments or questions from the counsel? Count, Molly Turner King?
I would just point out that this is also an award letter, and in the packet, the award letter that's included says this award is contingent on the proper execution and return of the previously provided grant agreement. So I don't know if there's. of the previously provided grant agreement, so I don't know if there's a grant agreement already in place, we just don't have a copy of it.
We have the grant agreement, we have not, I have not signed it yet because it has not been approved yet by county council, so it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg question. I've been waiting to sign it until I get a vote accepting it.
I'm on your side on this one.
So I have it, it's right here.
Okay, all right, other comments or questions from counsel? Seeing none, we're gonna go to public comment on the item, in the Nat U Hill, come forward or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you all for your time, we very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Lisa.
And we will probably get it signed then tomorrow, and we'll get it forwarded to you guys, the contract.
Counselor McKim?
Yes, I apologize, but apparently we have a break scheduled after the prosecutor's office, I was wondering if, I asked unanimous consent to take that break after the Health Department, which is the next one after the prosecutor's office.
Counselors, do you want to preserve the break, have the break, ignore the break? Any?
If anybody needs to, we'll just.
We okay with that? Are we sure?
I'm fine, I just didn't want to make Lori sit around for.
Sure, all right.
Let's keep going.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Hamlin.
I gotta read it. Hold on, we gotta read it.
Got a motion for you coming.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request to add a new account line 17100 transcripts and fund 1000-0009 general fund prosecutor.
Second.
Good evening, this is a request to reinstitute a line that we've had in the past, we just hadn't used it in many years, but because of a post-conviction relief case, we had to transcribe a bunch of old court hearings, and we don't have the line now to pay for it, so I'd like to create the line. We don't need an appropriation, we can move money around, it's not a very big bill.
Questions, comments from counsel?
I just would like to see that some of these housekeeping issues be combined together, done quickly at the beginning, let these department heads get in and out the door, because this is just housekeeping.
Call it consent agenda, which we certainly could do.
We could look at that, the pace of this meeting is a responsibility of every single person up here in many different ways, so I think we all need to look at our contributions to an effective, efficient meeting. All right, so with that in mind, any questions or comments to Ms. Hamlin? Seeing none, let us go to public comment on this, item come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none with that, we'll go to a voice vote, I can do that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it, so thank you on item A, let's move to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request for an additional appropriation and fund 8123-9624 stop grant in the amount of $117,553.30 in the personnel category.
Second.
Ms. Hamlin?
Good evening, it's finally happening. This is due to a lot of turnover at Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, which is our granting agency for this and our VOKA grant. It's taken the state, I mean, that's probably not the only reason, the state just takes forever to get these grants processed through their DocuSign. This grant term began October 1st of 2023, and we are just now getting it appropriated. This is one of those instances, this is a case where in the past I would have been able to spend into the red because we had an award letter, this is a grant we've received for over a decade, and it's caused a lot of, you know, human, potential for human error. We've got to go back now and make corrections to October 1st, once we start pulling this down, so that's a side conversation. This grant pays approximately 50% of the salary FICA and PERF for our sex crime deputy prosecuting attorney and a domestic violence deputy prosecuting attorney. The two DPAs in conjunction with the sex crime and domestic violence victim assistance and a part-time investigative assistant that's also funded through this grant, make up our special victims unit within the Monroe County Prosecutor's Office. The goal of this SVU is to more efficiently focus resources, training, and staff on crimes of violence against women.
Thank you very much. Let me ask, can I ask you a question? Have, has this ever, have you all ever had a case where a grant has been awarded through a letter but not then received by the prosecutor's?
Personally, I've never had that happen.
Okay.
But that's not to say it's never happened to anybody, but it's frustrating, having, you know, I've worked here 16, 17 years, we've had our VOKA grant for over 30 years, I've never had a problem, but now, you know, when I have to go get it appropriated again, I'm concerned that the state will take this long, we pay four people, a portion of four people's salary out of that. I'm lucky enough, I'm a larger department, I can, you know, pay out of county general for a while until the grant comes through, but a lot of departments don't have that ability, you know, and I'm lucky enough too that we have vacancies, so I'm not, you know, I can move money between lines, and that's just not always the case.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I'm just trying to get that context, and I appreciate your experience. Other questions, comments from counsel? Counselor Hawke?
Just that, you also know that if you move around and you go ahead and continue to pay those folks out of something you already have appropriated, if something wild should happen and you wouldn't get it, you would just have to reduce, it's possible, you would have to reduce your spending otherwise, and I would trust that you would be looking at that, and it would just, thank you for your thoughts on it.
Other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll invite public comment here in the Nat U Hill, come forward or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlin. All right, we'll move to item number 14, the Health Department, and Lori Kelly.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for an additional appropriations and fund 8126-9624 Futures Clinic in the amount of $235.94 in the personnel category, $3,273.48 in the supplies category, and $400 in the services category, for a total appropriation of $3,909.42.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, we appreciate you being here.
Of course, thank you. So this is just one of our typical futures requests, just requesting to appropriate this earned program income from insurance reimbursements and reimbursements for the long-acting reversible contraceptives. So this just continues to help support our salaries and supplies.
Okay, all right, questions from counsel? Not seeing any questions, we will go to public comment on this issue, come forward to the Nat U Hill if you have a comment, or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing no public comment, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to amend the 2024 salary ordinance and fund 1159-0000 Health Fund, amending the hours per week from 35 to 40 hours with a retroactive effective date of January 1st, 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kelly.
Yes, so back in the fall of 2023, the Board of Health did vote to recommend moving the financial manager from 35 to 40 hours. This is primarily based upon the heavy grant responsibilities with this position. In the department, we have been doing some restructuring with cross-training and helping to kind of divide duties up, and that has been successful, and we've had some new processes in place, so that is helping, but just given the grant load that this position has on top of the other responsibilities, that's really just the purpose of the request.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. We'll go to questions or comments from counsel, Counselor Hawke, I see your hand.
I'm sorry, I mean, I see that the motion is to start this in January 1, and I think we need to recognize that if we do that for one department, we'll need to do it for any others, that there could be a delay on. In addition to which, this is a non-exempt person, so how many hours, so we would be going back and paid for the 40 hours instead of 35, and did the person accumulate any overtime hours or comp time hours, maybe some of that's already been paid out? You see, it could be, it could be like a real bookkeeping nightmare, and I support moving forward with this, but not starting at January 1. We usually go back to, like, so that would be like for the next pay period or something, so whatever would work best for payroll, that's our normal way we do it. Is there a reason we're doing it otherwise?
Of course, every motion is open to an amendment. Yes, Counselor Iverson?
I just wanted to point out to the public that our ABLE staff has put together that fiscal and impact analysis on page 119 of the packet, comparing those two dates. The difference is negative.
Counselor McKim?
Well, I certainly don't support doing that, just because you do it for one department, then to be fair, we need to look favorably on the other, and we're not really talking about going back that far, but I moved that with, well, I was trying to wait for a date that would be the next payroll date, whatever.
February 11.
January 11.
February 11.
February 11. I'm off about that we changed that motion from January 1 to February 11.
Second.
Okay, there's an amendment to the motion and a second, we go straight to a vote on this, correct? There's no discussion?
No, you can debate.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment as offered? Auditor's hand, yes?
I'm just curious if anybody has reviewed to ensure this employee worked 40 hours for the period that they, that it would be retroactive?
It's the start of this pay period, so.
Oh, perfect, okay, thank you.
Amendment changes to the start of this pay period. Other discussions on the amendment? Seeing none, we, on this, I go to a voice vote, right?
Yeah, you can do a voice vote.
We'll do a voice vote on the amendment, all those in favor adopting the amendment as red signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The amendment carries, so the motion as, or the original motion as amended now is before us, any further discussion?
I think I've already mentioned my general support for moving positions from 35 hours to 40 hours, I think, given the volume of grants and the volume of new work that the Health Department is taking on, this, yeah, this is very easy to justify, so I hope everyone will vote yes on this.
All right, other?
The entire Impact Committee thought that was appropriate, to move to 40 hours.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, we will go to public comment, if you have public comment on this item, come forward to the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Somebody turn your mics off, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Kelly, for waiting. We'll move on to item number 15, the Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee, JFAK, with a quarterly update from Counselor Iverson, who's agreed to do this on their behalf.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, in early 2023, the Monroe County Council established the JFAK, or the Justice Fiscal Advisory Commission, and the purpose of that was to make fiscal recommendations to the council pertaining to justice reform. The structure of this update will follow the timely aspect of those recommendations. In sum, there were 34 recommendations, and each was assigned a time allocation labeled as immediate, short, medium, or long-term. Many of those recommendations do not currently have information, but I'm pleased to bring information on 18 of those recommendations. You can find the full entitled report at co.munro.in.us/counsel. We had a number of immediate time allocations, the first was to find new supportive transitional and affordable housing, and we are currently working with Centerstone on supportive housing, the Monroe County Health Department is working on recovery residential housing, but in general, Monroe County continues to experience a housing crisis. Recommendation number seven was to engage in a formal mapping process of the sequential intercept model through National Alliance of Mental Illness, and I'm proud to report that Melanie Vestlage and the Health Department and the Purdue Extension Office are working collaboratively on this, and they will have information for us shortly. Recommendation number 22 was to locate the justice complex as close to downtown services and bus lines as possible, we continue to look for a site, one has not been secured yet. And lastly, in the immediate category, number, recommendation number 25 is to work with the Monroe County Commissioners to pass a stepping up resolution as detailed on the National Association of Counties website, and we encourage the Monroe County Commissioners to consider the adoption of this at a forthcoming meeting. Those were the immediate recommendations. Next are some short-term time allocation recommendations. Number one, as we're moving from needs assessment to the pre-architectural phases of creating the new jail, we talked about expanding the JFAK body, which we have done, we also will note that transition team is in the process of being created, and a functional team is in place led by architectural firm DLZ. Recommendation number two is to not lose progress on non-architectural recommendations under this report, we should bring quarterly updates to this body, which I'm doing now. Recommendation number three is that the council should establish a working group that should identify what data is needed for an interdepartmental justice dashboard. I'm pleased to report that I've had a series of individual meetings, but questions remain regarding helpful data that does not violate individual sensitivity, or data that is sensitive to individuals. Recommendation number eight was to fund the promotion of and ensure funding continues for local crisis services, including but not limited to the Stride Center, mobile crisis teams, and promoting 988, we heard a little bit about that earlier today, and we have continued to do that. Recommendation number 10 was to fulfill the Sheriff's Department request to create the reentry manager position, to add a third qualified mental health professional in the jail, and add a substance use disorder counselor in the jail. The council will and should consider funding these positions if included in an AH contract requested by the Sheriff's Office. Recommendation number 11 was to implement the IRACs, or the Integrated Reentry and Correctional Support Program, in Monroe County. There is continued conversation about IRACs occurring in both monthly SUDAC meetings and the opioid settlement working group meetings. In conjunction, these bodies continue to pursue multiple certified recovery community organizations, or RCOs, and that includes certified peer recovery coaches in Monroe County. Recommendation 14 was work with Centerstone to identify needs and ensure funding continues for the forensic assertive community treatment, or FACT teams, that is being done. Recommendation 21 was to create a fund to reimburse or subsidize non-statutory fees to zero in coordination with the Board of Judges. I'm pleased to announce that the opioid settlement working group is working with the specialty courts and the Board of Judges to do just this, more information is forthcoming. Recommendation 32 is to continue to work toward establishing departmental gross square footage and building gross square footage calculations for the justice campus, and we are encouraging updates from the Sheriff's Office and or transition team as that work is completed. And lastly, let me conclude by noting that it is Black History Month, and we have set three recommendations made during our diversity, equity, and inclusion sessions of JFAK. None of the following three have been acted upon, and I want to use this platform to urge action on the following: to locate the justice complex as close to downtown services and bus lines as possible, that's recommendation 22. Recommendation 23 is to provide periodic training for all Recommendation 23 is to provide periodic training for all Monroe County staff in racial equity and implicit bias, and continue to measure progress in workplace climate competency. And number 24, to hire an anti-racism consultant to create a Monroe County anti-racism strategic plan, and to create the Monroe County Anti-Racism Task Force to have community-wide stakeholders assist with the creation and implementation of an anti-racism strategic plan. Thus concludes my report.
Thank you, Counselor Iverson. Do we have questions or comments from members of the council on the update? Yes, Counselor Crossley.
Um, I need like a, you read that as a marathon? Um, okay, so, thank you for the update. I had a quick question. I can't remember if we did this when we met as JFAC or another acronym group. Has the step-up resolution been presented to the commissioners?
I do not think that someone has been to the Board of Commissioners meeting to provide that to them, but I do know that the office is aware of the resolution through the NACA website or the National Association of Counties.
Okay. Maybe that's something that could happen?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, that is a non-binding resolution that multiple counties across the United States have adopted.
Okay. The other thing, I guess I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. So all of the recommendations and all of the work that you just listed or read out loud, that is for the public and for my record too, that's going to be on the council's website?
That's correct. Council staff has been very proactive by including the JFAC recommendations on the council website. So if you go to the council's website, you can find not only the JFAC recommendations, but also the suggested reading list, the list of testimony that we heard from different community groups and the different sessions that we were in. So it's a, that website has the repository of all of those meetings.
Okay, awesome. Gee, I thought I had one more thing. Oh, no, you didn't mean it this way by any means, but I know, like, your conversation or what you had just mentioned in terms of Black History Month and, and the, that's something that we should be working on, and I know you know this, but I'm just going to say it out loud, for us to be working on all 365 days a year, and now 366 because it's a leap year. But I just wanted to just point that out. I know you did not mean it in, in that particular way, but I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
I, I completely agree. Black History Month is a time for celebration, and we should be working on all this year round. I agree.
Thank you, Counselor Crossley. Counselor McKim?
And I'm sorry, maybe I missed this, but are the, the, these updates available on the website, or are you going to be able to send those out in written form?
Yep, I have all them in written form, and they'll be sent out to you all, and I imagine they'll be placed on the website as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Other comments? One, one item of note, I, I appreciate very much the update because it reminds me how much I, I've either not done or need to be doing in my role to be supportive of the strong work and efforts that you all did, particularly the three right here in the last year or so. And I'm going to review the list to see what I, in this role on behalf of the council, can do or be more proactive with all of our partners. And I also will note to the three of you that served in that role, I take instruction well. If you don't think there's something I'm doing that I should be doing, don't be afraid to, to jump on me with that, because I want to make sure this council and that hard deliberative work, that, that beautiful large report, I've never seen a volunteer board come up with that much, and, and I appreciate it. All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on now to item number 16, the, from the auditor's office and our, again, our new auditor.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for the creation of a new account line 39945 dispersment to bank and fund 4513-0000 2023 redevelopment bond, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $2.85 in the services category.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? We'll go to the auditor on this.
Just to clarify, it said 2013 redevelopment bond? Maybe I just heard incorrectly. Anyhow, this is just a really simple housekeeping item. We closed the account, received a small fee, which was just the interest earned, and to show that in our accounting software, we need to appropriate so we can do that.
So it should be 2013 that was closed, right?
So I should probably go ahead and restate that motion? Okay, 2013, let's go. Um, Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for the creation of account, new account line 39945 dispersment to bank and fund 4513-0000 2013 redevelopment bond, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $2.85 in the services category.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the motion and second?
I'm going to call a question.
Question has been called.
Well, there's no public here.
We will, let's, let's stick with what we got here. Anyone wishing to talk on that and come forward to NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams? Seeing none, do we roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson is not present. Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. This now takes us to item 17 in the Legal Department. Molly Turner King.
Counsel, I move to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement for the operation of the Bloomington Monroe County Capital Improvement Board and the Conventions, Convention and Visitors Commission.
Second.
All right, Ms. Turner King, can you speak to the updated CIB as we have it?
First, I'm not sure if Mr. Jeff Cockrell is online, but if he is, can we promote him to a presenter as well? He was trying to log on to Teams tonight. But...
TSD, are you seeing him in your system?
No, I do not see him.
Okay. Um, well, in that case, I will be presenting the CIB interlocal. The main changes to this draft document is that language pertaining to the CIB membership and the CVC membership has been removed, and, and the main reason that was removed is there are statutory guidelines that establish what those memberships are. And so, in essence, we would be following the statutes. And that was the major change from previous drafts. And so if there's any questions pertaining to the interlocal, I'm happy to address.
We will go to counsel questions, comments. Generally, I see Counselor Hawke first.
I, I just wanted to say a major thank you to the people who worked to get this language change so that we are following what the statutory guidelines are, because I did so want to vote in favor of this, and I've received several people saying, do I have any other questions? And with this change that's been made, I'm happy to support it, and hopefully this will get us all off of the dime. Of course, we've still got to wait for the city, but, I mean, the city hasn't voted on this as yet, right?
Correct, and it would go to the commissioners as well on the 21st.
Counselor McKim?
So I, I also want to echo the, the thanks. I think that the county legal and city legal and the city council's attorney, I know that you all have put in a lot of effort and just done a fantastic job. So the, the, the change that Ms. Turner King, I think, just described as, one of the big changes that, from last versions that we've actually discussed, is essentially just getting rid of a lot of clauses where we interfere in what the city is supposed to be doing, and they interfere in what we're supposed to be doing. And I think that, and a lot of that was really because we were still fighting old battles. And I'm really pleased that, you know, we, we are starting, this is, this is a new day. We're not fighting old battles. County does what the county statutorily required and authorized to do, and the city does what the city's statutorily authorized and required to do. So I look forward to voting yes on this and hope that the Board of Commissioners and City Council will as well.
Counselor Iverson?
I, I also want to congratulate everyone that worked on this. Again, this is a, a great example of the city and the county working together. We do it every day in different departments, and it's just one more example of the way we do it. I just wanted to read out the project goals. They're to expand the convention center and tourism industries in our region, to provide accommodations to local nonprofits and civic organizations, and to accentuate sustainable and environmentally progressive action. This is a win for our community. It's so exciting to finally be able to vote for this, and of course, this is going to bring economic development into our area. This is going to bring so many new conventions and people to our community. This is just so exciting to be able to vote for it. So thank you for finally getting this to our desk. I'm excited.
Counselor Munson?
I'm very happy with the wording in this agreement. It's like, why, why didn't we have this at the very beginning? It is so simple and straightforward.
Right.
But I want, I want to share with you all that I've heard from multiple people about this agreement, and their interest in having the council support this. There are businesses who look forward to the expanded convention center. There are members of the public who said, at last, you're finally going to do something. So I say yes, at last. I'm glad to be here tonight to do this.
All right. Any other counselors? I have a few comments of my own. I will say this, blessed are the peacemakers, and I want to praise again President Wiltz, who last fall really wholeheartedly, earnestly went into discussions with the, the city, our city council colleagues, and really moved those along and moved those along and moved those along and, and pressed that, that button on that. And I think if anyone in the public picked up a little tension, particularly in my voice at times, about any delay to this, I was intending for you to hear that, because I think that even as we celebrate this tonight, we are behind on getting this done. It's good, but no one praises somebody for showing up a little bit too late.
Yeah.
So I'm glad that we're doing this. And as I said to a constituent earlier today, I am excited to see this go tonight like a rocket ship out that dome. And I hope that that rocket ship does what Counselor Iverson said. It strengthens the core of this town, this city. It strengthens the core, how that core goes, how goes the county. Our county seat, our, the folks that come into this community, it is one and the same. If one is strong, the others will be strong as well. And I look at this whole project like that. And, and frankly, and I know Mr. McAfee's here, he can comment on this if he wishes or tell me to be quiet, but I hear from restaurant owners?
Yep.
And folks that say, you've got to strengthen the core, and you've got to recognize that it's a beautiful place, and that's a good headache to have, but you've got to do the things that made it beautiful. And the folks that were in our seats years ago did those things, now this is our turn. So this is a step. I also want to say this, I appreciate the city remaining in dialogue in this. It's a good example for what we got to do. We got to do more of that all the time. And so with that, I'm going to go to public comment. I suspect there will be some. Come forward in the NatU Hill room or raise your hand on Teams. Welcome. Thanks for waiting.
Good evening, Mr. President, counsel, distinguished staff. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. As you know, for multiple years now, the chamber has been a strong and vocal advocate of the expansion of our convention center. We are pleased with all the recent progress toward achieving our goal, including the creation of the Capital Improvement Board, CIB, last year. To continue building on this momentum, we strongly urge you to approve, to approve on this interlocal agreement with the city of Bloomington. This is a great example of collaboration between two units of government. The chamber views the convention center expansion as an instrument for delivering further economic development and quality of life benefits to our community, as Council Member Iverson sort of pointed out. The expansion of the convention center will bring significantly more Sunday through Thursday visitors to Bloomington and Monroe County. This translates to more tourism dollars being spent at our locally owned and operated business, businesses when these tourists spend money. It creates a ripple effect that stimulates the economy, economic activity in various sectors. This is new money to the economy, not transfer of local dollars from one entity to another. The project is also a perfect opportunity to redevelop a section of downtown that needs reimagination and community involvement. In addition, it is important to realize the expanded convention center will benefit our local charities and civic organizations that do so much impactful work in our community. These important organizations depend on large-scale fundraising events to raise the resources necessary to meet their missions. Because our existing center is inadequate in size to fully accommodate all of these events, our local civic and charitable organizations often cannot achieve their full potential. I thank you for your opportunity tonight to speak and hearing the chamber's position on the convention center, interlo-, uh, convention center interlocal agreement. We appreciate all of the efforts that each of you have put into this process over the years, and we look forward to achieving this important economic development goal for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. Come on forward to NatU Hill. All are welcome. Talisha Koppick.
You have to turn it on, it's not on.
Oh, am I right?
It says, yeah, people.
Hi, Talisha Koppick with Downtown Bloomington and the Convention Center, and I'm just happy to see all of you happy, and we'll work really hard to, to make you proud, and I'm pretty excited about the future. There's a good, solid base to, to start from, and it's going to be, it's, it's time for that next step. Our downtown really needs it, especially post-pandemic, and there's some hope, and so thank you very much, because there's a lot of work that, and patience that went into all of this, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Just want to echo what they said. My name is Mike McAfee. I'm the executive director at Visit Bloomington, and can't thank everybody enough for their years and years of work on this and where we're at now and moving it forward. We've got several groups we're, we're talking to already in the future about the new opportunities, and we're just ready to get after it. So thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, either in person or on Teams? Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to item B.
All right. Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval of, of the proposed 2024 agreement with the Financial Solutions Group.
Second.
All right. This is going to go to, that's Molly Turner King. Thank you.
So what is before you is consideration of a contract for Financial Solutions Group? I'm going to share my screen because the Long-Term Finance Committee met last Friday, and they had some suggested additions to the contract, so I want to share those additions with you and see if any other council members have additions. And then the next step would be if council approves this contract, we would move it forward to the commissioners for approval.
Counselors, do you have questions on this item?
Sorry, we're experiencing technical difficulties, and that difficulty is just me.
That's fair. That's all of us. That's all of us.
We see it.
So one of the scopes of service that I added is down here in red, and this was a recommendation of the Long Term Financing Committee, so it's assisting the county with determining potential impacts of annexation on county budget slash revenue. And then the other change to the proposed contract is I added a clause down here that says the schedule set forth below, which is dates or months for FSG to attend meetings is tentative, subject to change. We'll keep in contact with FSG on any and all schedule changes to come to a mutually agreeable date. So I didn't know if other council members had suggested or amendments they'd like to see for the scope of service.
Okay, when I'm reviewing it, I'm trying to, if you're, this is a contract for services for Monroe County Council. It's not for the entire county, because if it's, you see what I'm saying? Is this be paid for out of our budget, then they're providing us a service, and so that we can establish which times we might need them or whatever. We wouldn't want everyone else trying to be, figuring out when they're going to need them, and it's all coming out of our. I don't know why I didn't think of this earlier, so I'm just now looking at it to put that question. What do you think?
Is there a way to specify that, if that is what the council wants?
So I could indicate attendance at budget meetings and other council-related meetings, or other meetings requested by council.
I mean, is that, is that what you're trying to add? Who directs the work?
Right. Who's in charge of this railroads? What I'm trying to figure out.
Counselor Munson says she's in charge. She raised her hand. No.
I'm going to take care of the whole thing. Okay, stop the number one. Oh, I lost it on the screen. Back to number one. Oh, it was a different number one.
This number one?
Okay, in the number one currently showing on the screen, last sentence in red, the county will communicate with FSG any and all changes.
We do understand which part of the county.
The county council. So as many times as you can specify county council, I think it will help us and FSG.
Seeing some agreement to Counselor Munson's statement. Does that make sense, Ms. Turner King?
It's not the Long Range Plan Committee. It's the council.
Counselor McKim. So I guess we've conveyed this, the concept, Ms. Turner King, that we want to make sure that the county council is directing the work here. We don't need to see it back again before we approve it, right? Is everybody okay with trusting?
Yeah.
Let's make it happen. Any other comments or questions on the draft that you've seen in the packet that you're seeing now? We good? All right. Do we want to vote on this? Yeah?
I do.
All right. We'll take a public comment on this item. If you have thoughts here in the Nat U Hill, come forward or raise your hand on teams.
It was me.
That was me too.
I'm s- I'm s- I do see a hand coming up, and it's Mr. Jeff Cockrell.
Yes, I would just note that, you know, when we're talking about, especially the section with the statutory duties, a lot of the statutory duties dealing with budget also interacts with the auditor's office. So maybe for that section, you would want to leave the auditor in.
Counsel, pardon me. Yep, counsel. Yeah, I'm feeling a little bit heavier than I thought. Counsel, thoughts on that? Is that friendly language there we could agree to?
I mean, the auditor will be a major source of inputs to the, and so, you know, scheduling things with the auditors and taking her into account. Yeah, that's very important. I think what we were just trying to get at is that essentially, this is coming out of our budget, because it is there primarily to serve our statutory requirement to create a budget. So I think that's just what we were trying to get at, not to say that we're not also going to work with the auditor and the commissioners and.
Ms. Turner King?
And I will also add that the next item on the council agenda is consideration of adding the auditor as an ex officio to the Long Term Finance Committee meeting, which FSG will be attending, so.
Yeah. All right. Sounds to me like we've got some firm idea here. All right, we've had Jeff Cockrell from Public Comment, so I think we can now go to a vote. All the, we'll go to a roll call.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hock? Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much. Let's move to item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the amendment to Resolution 24-05, establishing the Long Term Finance Planning Committee to include adding the auditor and/or an auditor representative as an ex officio member to the committee.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. This was a considerable discussion with the Long Term Finance Planning Committee. Any comments from counsel? Sounds like everybody's good. All right. Public, do you want to weigh in on this one? Come on forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we're going to go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, that takes us to item D, and this is a, was a request that we had to make sure that we're talking about what we had done last year during budgeting process related to some of the budget wizardry we were doing with our corrections dollars, and to see what next step directions we might consider with some of that financial wizardry we had done, particularly regarding the jail medical services contract. I see that the sheriff is still here, as well as the chief deputy as well, and we'll hear from them, and then any thoughts from counsel.
Is it still Tuesday or is it Wednesday?
Thursday.
Well, our intent here is to just very briefly take you from A to Z on this thing, to kind of decomplicate what we're trying to do here. And then the second part of that is for you all to stand up, throw money at us, and ask yourselves why you didn't do it sooner. So that's what we're going to try to do tonight. So. So if you remember, back in May, I think in May of last year, the sheriff put out a seven-point plan, and there were seven positions that we thought would take us forward with trying to render better services there in the jail facility. Over the course of time, we kind of narrowed those down to three. And each of those three are amendments to the jail medical contract that we can do through the contract that serve new employees going through PACC and all that stuff. So those were a reentry coordinator, and by the way, I think you just mentioned all three of these positions in your update. Substance abuse counselor, another mental health profession. So I've got some pretty decent news about that. So here's what we did. If you remember in the budget, I'm going to pull out my email here. Our normal budget, what we budgeted in 2023 versus what we budgeted in 2020, for 2024. What we did is we looked at the budget and go, okay, how much more money do we need in our budget to accommodate these three positions? So we got estimates from ACH of what that would be, and it was right around $800,000 for those three positions. So in 2023, we budgeted for medical 1.89418 million. So in 2024, what the sheriff asked for in that, in the budget, was 1.976. So there's your difference to fund these positions. Now, I do think it's necessary that, you know, you never know how medical in a jail is going to go. But in late last year, we had to ask for an additional $480,000 for additional appropriation of medical, just to pay for the medical expenses. So that difference there is of that one roughly, just over 1 million to the 1.9 was what we had asked to use to cover these three positions. The council in the budget session approved not 1.9, but they approved 1.576, so $400,000 short. And that's what we were talking about, using this $400,000 through the corrections letter, public safety letter. I can't remember what the proper term is. So I've talked with our liaisons back when we had our liaisons have switched, but now we've got this $400,000, and it's my understanding that this comes in in monthly increments. It comes in in one-twelfths. It doesn't, you just don't get your $400,000. But as I look at this, we're already budgeted the 1.5. So we're already into the year here, and so we've got enough, I think, to go ahead and start that. We could wait a little while if we needed to, but I'm not sure it's necessary, particularly when I'm about to tell you this little tidbit of information. We did a little more talking with ACH, the medical contractor. The individual that was there before that was our contact is no longer there. So we circled back around, and that amount has dropped from about $800,000 to about $535,000. So I think with those two things here, I've got the quote right here in front of me, so I'll make sure I'm not, you know, misquoting anything.
Can you say that number slower and a little bit louder?
Okay.
Wait, pick us up off the floor?
Yeah, it went down from about $800,000. I don't have the exact number of the old quote, but it was somewhere right around the $800,000 range. It's $535,000 now. So, I'm sorry. So if you look at what we asked for from the '23 budget to the '24 budget, that number, I've got it here. See if I can find it. I just tallied it up. Where did I put it? The difference is 800, is about 86,000, a little bit more than 86,000. So what I'm saying is, rather than needing that entire $400,000 that we asked for to be set aside, if you look at the difference between what we budgeted in 2023 and what we've got budgeted for 2024, the 1.5, we're only, we've only got a shortfall of about 86,000 to cover all three of those positions. So what I'm saying is, we may not need that entire $400,000 that the council asked us to kind of sit tight on until we figured it out. So with our budget already being set at 1.5 roughly, and the price drop in these three positions, I'm trying to find a reason why we're not positioned to go ahead and charge forward. Does that make sense to anybody but me?
Well, let's see. Counselors, what questions, comments do you have here? Counsel McKim?
I guess fiscally, it certainly makes sense to move forward. That's not much of a shortfall at all. I guess I'd like to know, what is the status of the draft contract? Has it been reviewed by legal yet?
I don't have a draft contract. All I've asked for is the price estimate. So, you know, that's going to be another time lag to get that draft contract, and I would certainly appreciate it if Molly and Jeff would look at that draft amendment when it comes in, so that we make sure we're dotting all our i's and crossing all of our t's. But I can tell you this, dollars and cents aside, I know we've got to consider that, and I know you have to consider that certainly, but if, you know, we've talked about this, we're sneaking up on a year now here, and I can tell you, we are completely reactive in terms of our, the two mental health professionals we have right now. This is going to allow us to do some like group counseling and some individual counseling and things like that. I think the substance abuse speaks for itself, and the reentry of counselors, just what we were talking about with Counselor Iverson there, that this is how we align people with services when they leave right now. And right now, we're shoving them out the door, trying to give them some clothes to put on their backs, and shoes for their feet, and getting them out the door, and it's what we can do right now, but I think we can certainly improve that. So I don't want to get into all the giga weeds of what the seven-point plan entailed, but I really think we're at the place now where we, I think we can, it was cloudy to me before of all of this, okay, this part's satisfied for this, and your budget for this, and, you know, you've got to wait for this money to come in and all that. But as I've said, or encrusted numbers, I just can't figure out why we're not, we're not able to move.
I think Counselor Munson, I saw you next.
I'm curious to know, was there a change in the services that were to be provided? Because that was a substantial decrease in.
No. How do I say this tactfully? When we got those first estimates, I mean, it rocked me back in my chair, to be honest with you. I was like, holy, that's a lot of money for three positions, almost a million dollars. So we kept having dialogue about that, and finally, we got to a level at ACH where it began to be questioned. And it wasn't long after that that the individual we were talking to was, we were no longer talking to him, and we got this new quote back. So no, it's, what we're talking about is it's 40 hours a week on all three. There's an option to do 20 hours a week, but every one of these is a 40-hour position. So it's adding those three positions, and that's what the quote was for the other one, was 40 hours, three positions.
Okay.
Counselor Monble? Well. I heard my name. I do know my name. So from a PAC perspective, I think, do we, have I seen job descriptions yet? I don't think so, right? Oh, that's right, because ACH, that's right, because ACH, yeah.
ACH does have job descriptions for this, which they shared with me and I shared with counsel, but this would not be county job descriptions, because it's a contract.
Question answered.
I, I mean, I think the case was already made that we need these positions, that they'll be invaluable to improving what's going on and building on the work that you've already done. And I, you know, we were planning on doing this anyway, and this is just all the more reason to do it now. I mean, by the time you get a contract signed, we'll have 86,000. I mean, by the time you get a contract signed, we'll have 86,000 in that account from collections. So I, I'm all in.
I, I guess I did just have one kind of substantive question on the positions. I know that the probation department does have some role in reentry planning. I guess, can you help me understand how this function in the jail, what this contract would differ from services that are provided by the Monroe County probation?
The probation department does, but it's, it's usually aligned only with those people who are put on probation. We have a lot of people that leave that facility that, that are not in the probation status when they leave, but they still have the need for services. And, and honestly, even when they are, the coordination between probation and the jail just isn't there because there isn't someone to staff it. So this will improve that. These positions should be communicating with the courts, they should be communicating with probation. That reentry, now that reentry position's going to be a very, very busy person, but, and, and we always talk about when someone's leaving, but the reentry starts the day they enter. So, you know, that person will be looking at, okay, what are, what are the issues of this person coming in? How long do we anticipate them being there? And they start that process day one. It begins date one.
So that's the major thing for us, that, that as soon as it walks through our doors, we're starting it right there. We're not going to wait until they leave, because at that point, we'll be reactive instead of proactive, if that makes sense.
And, and I want to make sure that I'm, I'm being clear here, because the, the 86,000 is the difference between what we, what we budgeted in 2023 and what we, what we asked for is the, is the, is the, let me, let me go back and explain that. We budgeted about 1.1 in 2023. We have been budgeted already 1.5 for 2024. That 1.5 is, is going to have about an 86,000 shortfall to get us to all three of these positions. Am I being clear on that? Okay, because I, I just, I want to make sure I'm, so that, that money, that 1.5 is already sitting there. But again, we had to come back and ask you all for additional appropriation for medicals. I want to make sure I'm not deceiving or not providing every bit of information at my disposal to you.
Counselor Hock?
Yes, I think part of this conversation is that you have that community corrections tax as a backup to fill back in your need to, as your budget, as you have run through the year, and you have additional needs in your budget. So now, you could really, you, that portion of your budget, that category, you could transfer around until you can get to us and tell us the dollar amount that you need to be appropriated in that community corrections tax. I mean, if you need to move quicker on it. But certainly, part of what our discussion was to be about, it seems to me, is, and I know the amount is more than 400,000, but not a great deal more. And so my suggestion was that what we might do is let the first six months build up in cash, so they'd have an operating balance, and, and be able to just appropriate one half of what the total revenue would be for whatever their needs are. And then they, they'll have that forwarding balance, just continue to keep them with a balance to work with. I mean, the auditor does not want to have to be writing a check out every month and then wondering if she's going to be short. So that would be my suggestion, that we do that. And for what, we wouldn't have to do it right now, because you, you don't need the 86 immediately.
Win the contract and stuff.
Counselor Wiltz?
So I, I agree that maintaining an operating balance is, is important. Why would we not just, when the time comes, appropriate 100,000? Because that's a.
Whatever, whatever they need.
Covers the amount and then allows this first year to build up a little bit more.
And it may end up being more than 100. It may be that they'll need, you know, because like you said, he needs that additional 400 or whatever. So I just want to make sure that we don't think we can spend the full amount.
Absolutely.
Just one half of it for, and put it in whatever line makes sense. We've got to establish, the fund's been established, but the line items have not been established. So we need to establish lines and then put a dollar amount in one of those lines. They can move it around, do whatever they need to do.
Yeah, I, I guess where I'm coming from is, is to take these positions completely out of, out of the discussion, as we had last year. We may, we may have, may have additional expenses that come up, even, even when these positions are funded, or even if they weren't, just like we did last year. So I guess I look at them as two separate issues. We funded that at 1.576, directly related to getting part of the money in our budget to cover these three positions. It, it, it didn't, you know, we all know that if that money's put in there to cover those positions, and we've got them in there, we may have to come back for an additional appropriation for medical. But I, I, I guess I just, I hope that we don't say, listen, you've got the three positions here, based on the budget that we allocated for you, plus the 400,000 that is coming your way, but that may get absorbed with additional medical expenses that come later on in the year, I guess is what I'm, what I'm concerned about.
Right, that's the reason, sorry, that's the reason why I'm saying that as soon as possible, you put together a budget that you want budgeted with that, you know, one half of the community correction tax revenue, we already know what that is, and, and work with us. Doesn't mean you're going to spend it all just because we put it there, because you may need it for next year more than you need it for this year.
Right, yeah. So is, are we in agreement then, should I go ahead and seek this contract and, and get it kind of in our hands? Get it over to legal, understanding that we are, we are budgeted at this point at 1.576. To start that process, we may have to get 100,000 later added in, and then in July, we may say, well, jeez, we've had these terrible medical expenses, and we need 300,000 for that.
That, right.
Okay, all right.
Counselors, that's good.
But the 300,000 would have to come out of county general, because we don't, we're not going to have 300,000 in the community corrections. We're only going to have, that you're going to be allowed to spend about 200,000. Is, is that as you understand it, Kate, Kate and I are?
Or, or 100, or, yeah, I mean, yeah, we'll, we'll figure that out, but we understand that you can't predict them.
We understand you can't predict emergencies and that you may need more money.
Thank you.
Counselor McKim?
Thank you.
Yes, and I, I don't want to at all take this in a different direction. I, I support the, the path that we've already agreed on. But, and I'm going to keep saying this, I still think we should be spending some of the opioid settlement money on, on these, on substance abuse, on addressing substance abuse in the Monroe County Jail. How do we do that? How do we, I keep asking the staff, how do we actually appropriate and spend that money?
Counselor Iverson's got an answer. Do you want to speak to this first? So Mr. McKim brings up a very interesting point, that in the opioid settlement working group, I don't think we have representation from the sheriff's department. I think that's an oversight that we need to fix as soon as possible, because in the opioid settlement working group, we are talking about reentry, we are talking about substance abuse disorder inside the jail, and the IRACs program and all this. We, we need to have you at the table to talk about these things. And, and obviously, you know, the, the funds in that, that body, or in, in that fund, excuse me, that's going to just keep on coming, year after year, as more settlements are, are determined, is going to be available. So I think, I'll, I'll stop saying that, but I, I don't want to leave this room without making the point, I, we need representation from the sheriff's department in that group.
Okay, as far as the process, we are working on an application process and just our policy and procedure in general to present to both the council and commissioners regarding this funding. So stay tuned, it is coming. So we're working on a way where nonprofits or whomever is in need of substance use funding to help combat this, there will be an avenue to apply for that.
I mean, that's good to hear, except we've already voted on several proposals that have come from the board of commissioners. I guess I, I want to make sure that we're able to make those kinds of proposals ourselves for functions that are, we're paying for out of account, from county government funds.
And that's exactly why we wanted to have the application, so it's coming from the community and not necessarily from an internal group. Or it could come from both.
Good point made. Counselor Hock?
Just as a comment, and, and that's something that I spoke with Councilmember McKim about, is that we need to move forward with the community corrections, budgetary, whatever, make it, some line for it so they can get to it. But that doesn't mean that I don't prefer to get it out of that opioid settlement, because we never know what other things might show up that we're going to need this, because that community corrections tax can go for any expense there in the jail. So we need to make sure that we pull as much out of that opioid settlement.
Yeah, more restricted, yes, absolutely.
And if we budget it over here in that community corrections, that doesn't mean we have to spend it if we can get it someplace else and free up that money for other needs for the jail. That's just, I just don't want it to delay and delay and delay.
Sure.
And not move forward.
Well, one just note I would say is that, one of the useful things that having this kind of discussion with this particular council is that we're, we're seeing some things need to be done, we're getting some things done, and we're getting more folks to the tables. Counselor Iverson suggested where they need to be. This was very productive. I know it was a late night to wait to get to this, but next time, we'll try to get you very early, and then, and I apologize for the, the delay. All right, we good on this item? Thank you so much, Sheriff. Thank, thank you so much, Chief Deputy Parker.
We appreciate your time. Wise man Munson told me, Phil, you need to learn, learn to start taking yes for an answer. I'll be quiet.
He's a wise man.
Yeah, I was just going to say, just give me a call when you guys are ready to start planning on what account you want, and I'll work with you on.
Oh, that's great.
Setting that together.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much, yes. Thank you, Counselor.
Have a good night. We will now go to item 18 on our agenda, and this is ARPA-related. I believe this is a housekeeping item related to ARPA, to make sure we're doing what we need to do to keep it.
Counsel, I move to approve the board of commissioners' request for an additional appropriations and fund 8950-0000 American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Fund in the amount of $40,000 in the supplies category, $4,901,485.83, and $8,714,808.87 for a total appropriation
We've got a motion and a second. And we will have any discussion, again, I just want to, this is housekeeping, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, it, it's simply housekeeping. You've already reviewed, discussed, and approved these previously. Many of them didn't have MOUs or any kind of contract attached yet, so best procedure we discussed in house was just to go for additional appropriations for all of them to make it clean, so.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will see if there's any public comment on this housekeeping motion. Raise your hand or come forward. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Sorry, Counselor Hock is not present. Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, and that can take us now to item 19, because there's no other ARPA business before us, and so we'll go to the minutes. Pardon me? Yeah?
Quick point of order. Do we have a forthcoming meeting with the board of commissioners to discuss the ARPA projects that have yet to be decided on, or any funds that need to be expended before the deadline at the end of this year?
Not set, but we should. That's a good point, fairly taken. We will mark that as an agenda item for us to get that going again.
Thank you for that point of order.
Absolutely, you're welcome. Thanks for raising it. Awesome. Let's move on to those minutes.
Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes for the September 14th, 2023 budget work session number five, September 20th, 2023 budget session work number six, October 17th, 2023 24 budget adoption, and December 12th, 2023 regular session as presented.
Second.
All right. Any changes, edits, or questions to minutes? Kim Shell's got a change or an edit.
I think I did a copy paste, and those dates are incorrect, because.
Do we want to just hold the item to future?
Because what I have is October 3rd, 2023, which is the 2024 budget public hearing minutes, and January 23rd, 2024 joint executive session of the council and the board of commissioners.
That's what's on the agenda.
That's what's on the agenda. So that is my fault, and I'm sorry.
I will restate that motion. Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes for the, oh, yeah, that one. Yeah, October 3rd, 2023, 24 budget hearing summary minutes, and January 23rd, 2024 joint executive session of the county council and board of commissioners.
Second.
All right, motion and revise. Second, here we go. Any discuss, further discussion? Seeing none, any public comment, come forward, and that you, Phil, raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
I was going to say, you guys have approved these voice vote in the past.
Can I, with one down? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Minutes are done. Counsel comments is item number 20. Counselors, do you have comments for the good of the order? I'm seeing none. Counselors are done with their comments. Good for them. Good counselors. All right, with that, thanks everyone for all, you, Counselor Crossley.
I was just going to say really quickly, so quick, so quick, I promise. It is day 13 of Black History Month, and we get an extra day because it's leap year this year. Although we don't have center events for this in the county, the city of Bloomington and other places around are also doing things. This year, the theme is Blacks in Cinema, and it has been a really interesting conversation. And so there are plenty of things that you can do. Take a look at the, or you can do a Google search and search for all of the events that is happening, and we only got two more weeks, so yay.
Thank you very much, Counselor Crossley. Counselor Munson?
I'd like to say that the Monroe County History Center is doing something for Black History Month. There's one exhibit on the first floor that is about the March in Alabama, and it, it involves people from Bloomington, so it has local history that you might want to check out. And there, there is also an exhibit about how the name was changed to Eagleson Avenue and why. And just check it out at the History Center, it's open Tuesday through Sunday, Tuesday through Saturday, excuse me, and I hope, hope you'll stop by.
Thank you very much. It's always fun at the History Center. Any other comments? All right, thanks, just final comment I'll make. Thank you to all the county employees, all the department heads, all the elected officials that made this meeting happen this evening and made county government move on. We appreciate you for staying late. We appreciate also the deputy in the room, coverage with cats, TSD, they're all saints, and of course, the media for covering us, because it's important that these things be reported. All right, thank you much, we're adjourned.